Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Delaware County Council meeting, September 28th, 2021, here at the Delaware Commissioners' courtroom. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Would ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Denise, you want to start us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Steve, could we get a roll call, please? Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Present.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
And Denise, were the advertisements made, agenda posted?
Yes.
Thank you. And I need an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Roll call, please, Steve. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. Yes. Okay, again, just an announcement. Any questions from the public can be directed to the County Council email address, county council, diist@co.dellaware.in.us. They can also be made throughout the other days of the month directly to the council people at their emails addressed, which are on the website. And we will also have public comment, excuse me, at the end of the meeting today. And I need an approval of the August meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Any questions, discussions, changes, corrections? Roll call, please, Steve. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
All right, and we've got a lot on the agenda to meeting. There are three resolutions that will be hearing today. I think Brad is going to present, and I think you've got some other people here to speak as well.
Correct. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Brad Bookout with Delaware County Economic Development. It's a pleasure to see all of you today. Before you are resolutions for three tax abatements that have been requested of the county. The Tax Abatement Committee has met. Thank you, Ryan, also Brian Waters and Rob Keesling, your appointments of that body, and they have given approval of these abatements. These are phased-in, 10-year tax abatements, meaning that the county receives some revenue during the period of the abatement. So we consider these what we call revenue-positive tax abatements. The first one that I'm going to present for Midwest Metal, this is just be the one hearing today. They are already in an economic development area, which is a prerequisite of having a tax abatement. So there'll just be one hearing with Midwest Metal today. The second two, if you wish to move forward, you'll have to establish the EDA, the Economic Development Area, at today's meeting. There will be a public hearing at your October meeting, and then a final confirmatory resolution to approve the second two. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and get started with the first one, Midwest Metal. Chad Smith, representing the company, is here with us today. Midwest Metal Products Company Incorporated at 3701 South Cowan Road is the applicant. That is where the equipment will be located at. The current purchase price of the equipment, this is a personal property abatement request, is $1,400,000. This is new equipment that is being brought from out of state, which meets the qualifications for a request for tax abatement. The company has no liens or judgments or pending litigation. The company's been in business in Delaware County for 100 years, just had their 100th anniversary this year, so congratulations, Chad, on that. They've been headquartered in Delaware County. This is their headquarters. Total number of employees currently working at the facility is 145. Approximately 80% of those are Delaware County residents. They're projecting zero to two employees as a result of this abatement. Within the next 12 months is when they anticipate to hire these people, but they're also trying to hire 10 additional employees for other work in their factory. They do note that hiring new employees is very difficult at this time, so as we all know, there are more jobs available in Delaware County than there are people to fill them. And they're understaffed at this time. The starting wage is $13 an hour. The high wage is $25 an hour. Average wage is $17.35. They have provided their $150 nonrefundable check to the Delaware County Treasurer. They have completed their personal property SB1 statement of benefits. They've provided a map of the location. These are all requirements of the abatement. And regarding the estimated abatement amount, now, I want to be very clear that these are estimates provided by Baker Tilly, depending on the anticipated assessed value. So the estimated abatement savings phased in over 10 years is $98,460. Net new taxes during that time to the county is $51,840 during that time. So Chad Smith is here, just to say a couple of quick words on behalf of the company, and we're happy to answer questions.
Top one?
Yes.
Hi, good morning. It might sound a little familiar. We were here about two years ago for a tax abatement for the same piece of equipment. We're currently going through some maintenance capex. All this equipment was purchased back in the '90s, and we've bandaged it up as much as we could. We just need to replace it. So this is the second slaughter we are replacing with an ideal mesh welder. Nice piece of equipment, obviously, at 1.4 million. I'd hope so, but this will help us continue to run the business and grow the business. I don't know, any other questions?
This is random, has nothing to do with anything, but do you have to take insurance out on equipment like that?
Yes, it is. It is insured.
Four million dollars, it is.
I guess you don't have to, but it's in our best interest, yeah.
I toured their facility, maybe it was a couple of years ago when you were asking. It's an amazing facility. It is such a jewel for Delaware County. I wish everybody could see it.
I appreciate that.
The toughness in the organization and...
Yeah, you probably know this, a lot of old equipment, so we're in the process of our capex lately has been two to four million a year. It'll likely continue for a while as we replace a lot of older equipment with the newer stuff.
Well, and congratulations on 100 years. That's quite a while to be in business with all of the changes that have happened over the last 100 years, for sure.
He doesn't look quite that old, does he?
He doesn't, yeah, he doesn't. Denise, this is resolution, what's the resolution number on that one? Again, I just want to confirm it.
2021-035.
Any more questions from council at this point? I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Ballard, second from Piper. Any further questions from council?
Congratulations, Charles.
Roll call, please, Steve. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And if you haven't figured out, we're going slightly out of order on what was on the agenda there. That was the second one that was on the agenda.
So thank you, council. I want to proceed to the next one. We'll try to have some, be as expeditious as possible with these. This next one is one of the ones where, as I mentioned, you will be required to establish the economic development area. That's what you are doing today to allow for the project. This is a tax abatement submitted from Invenergy for what is called the Meadow Forge Solar Energy LLC solar farm. It's located at 16,500 North 600 West in Gaston, Indiana. This is just north of the town of Gaston on 600 West. It is outside of the town limits of the town of Gaston. The new equipment that is being requested for abatement is solar modules, solar racking equipment, project substation and transformers, solar inverters, fencing, cabling, gravel, et cetera. Intended use of the equipment, of course, is to generate electricity for power provider or corporation. The estimated purchase price of the equipment is $155 million. The equipment is coming from out of state. The company currently has no tax liabilities in Delaware County. They will have, of course, once they make this investment in our community. They have no judgments, liens, or pending litigation against the company, and the company has been in business for 21 years. Regarding new employees with a solar farm, the employment, a lot of it, is based with the construction. They anticipate 150 temporary construction workers and two permanent operating and maintenance workers at the facility once it's completed. Salary of at least $52,000 a year for the operating and maintenance workers. They have made their $150 check payment to the Delaware County Treasurer. They have provided me with the SB1. They have provided their map of the location, which I believe you have been provided with this application. And then the estimated tax savings, this is a 10-year abatement phased in over 10 years for the company, and this is the estimation from Baker Tilly, is $5,090,320 estimated new tax revenue during the same period of time, or I'm sorry, over the life of the project. New tax liability to be generated by the county over the life of the project is $32,765,860. So this is a significant capital investment that the county will see. We're very excited for the size of the project. It is significant. And I have also with us today Tom Schroeder from the company here to speak on behalf of it. So, Tom, do you want to address the council?
Thank you, Brad. Good morning, council. Appreciate your time this morning. Just wanted to give a brief introduction of who Invenergy is and the progress we've made thus far on our Meadow Forge solar project. As Brad mentioned, Invenergy's been around for 20-plus years. Our company is really Midwest-based. Our headquarters are in Chicago. A lot of our prior developments have been in the Midwest, but we are a global company. Originally got started in natural gas development, still do some of that, but our portfolio has really transitioned more to wind and solar over the past decade, as we've seen more demand from that, from various utility companies. So, you know, we're really excited to be here in Delaware County. Really, it is coming naturally, this demand, as I mentioned, from utility companies, as they are looking at their future portfolio, looking at their operating costs, and seeing that coal, in certain cases, is becoming too expensive. They're looking for next-best alternatives, and solar and wind are meeting that demand right now. So, you know, we've been here in Delaware County for a little over two years. It's been a great working relationship with our landowners in the northwest part of the county. Performed a number of surveys, got a better sense of the land, and we feel really comfortable with the site we've chosen. Also had the pleasure of working with MARTA on establishing a solar ordinance here in Delaware County, so really making sure the citizens of Delaware County are protected and also leaving the ordinance suitable for development, so really mutually beneficial solar ordinance here in place. So we're really excited to be here in Delaware County and appreciate the opportunity to introduce this project to you here this morning, so more than happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
How many acres is this?
Yeah, so within the project fence itself, we're looking at about 1,000 acres. And the project fences, as you can imagine, with roads and other various wetlands, things like that, it is kind of broken up into different chunks throughout that 1,000 acres.
You said property owners, relationship with property owners. Are you leasing this land, or did you purchase it?
We are leasing it, yep.
And how long?
We forecast the project to last 35 years.
So after 35 years, and we talked about this in tax abatement, but I need it on public record as well. After 35 years, if you guys decide to go, what happens to all that equipment?
Yeah, it's a good question. So we will be entering into a decommissioning agreement with Delaware County. That's required by the ordinance. Basically, that establishes the criteria that we need to meet in order to safely ensure that all this material is going to be removed at the end of the project. That includes posting a surety bond with the county, so the county has those funds, and we will be laying out those steps and procedures to make sure decommissioning goes smoothly.
But it doesn't stay, in layman's terms, it doesn't stay.
Exactly. The land itself can be returned to agriculture once the project is over. We don't really pour a lot of concrete, other than the project substation. It's really steel piles that are just being driven into the ground, can be removed and returned to agriculture.
So at the end of that 35-year, when that process takes place, who pays for that?
That is paid through the surety bond process, and the company will then pay those funds to ensure that the project is removed. So it's, you know, it's in our best interest to ensure that the county isn't on the hook for that.
Thank you.
No cost to the county. That's what we're hearing, right?
This is all capital investment. There's no, really, in terms of infrastructure as well, there's no major cost to the county to be paving new roads or anything like that. It's really capital investment on the land that's already existing.
Well, I understand that in this agreement, there is paving of roads included out there.
Yes, there's an economic development agreement that's currently being negotiated between the county attorney and the company, and that includes an assessment of the current roads now, and then a road use agreement, which will ask the company to put the roads back into better shape than what they found them at the site. Also includes what Ryan was addressing regarding the decommissioning of it, that, you know, there is a bond in place, and so if the company is not here at the end of the project, that there are funds, and there's a mechanism by which to have the project removed at that time.
And I think I understand this right, but let me clear that up, too. The assessed value on that land will increase?
That is correct.
And none of the abatements or anything like that, that were economic development, are limiting the amount that that land will, we're not abating any of that, of those increases?
This is just an equipment abatement, just personal property. Correct.
Will the increase in the assessed value on the land, will that cover this whole 1,000 acres, or what's in use?
I believe so. It's going to be up to the assessor to really make that final determination, but I would say yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Ron?
Well, there's a cap on farm ground as far as assessed value. Will this be reclassified as industrial, or will it continue to be assessed as farm ground?
It will not be assessed as farm ground. This is something that's actually been addressed at the state level, so there are certain caps in place right now for assessed value of solar, but it is not considered traditional agriculture, so assessors are looking at it differently.
So it could be assessed above that 450, or whatever it is, cap?
Yes. Yeah.
Can't remember exactly.
Well, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but personally, I'm a proponent and a fan of solar power and renewable resources, so thank you for choosing to come to Delaware County and lead in the way for hopefully some future renewable energy development.
Appreciate that, Ryan, thank you. So the company's been working with 16 various landowners. There are 16 landowners who are included in the application. As I've spoken with the company regarding the public hearing, if there are remonstrances or concerns of some sort, that if you hear those, please relay those back to me. I'll immediately address those with the company. We've asked the company to handle those and to work with those folks and to address any of their concerns ahead of the meeting, and they've been willing to do that, so we're very happy with that. Our intention is to keep this as a smooth process for you and for them, and I think that's a key component moving forward with having a public hearing and a final confirmatory vote in next month's meeting.
And do you guys currently have solar farms in other areas, your company?
We do, yeah. We've got completed project in Illinois, recently in Ohio, and then a few in Wisconsin that are about to be completed. That's just the Midwest specifically, but the portfolio, we've got a lot under construction outside of that, and, you know, outside of the Midwest, a number of projects, east coast, west coast as well.
Just want to make sure we're not the first one.
No, you're not. Yep.
How close do these solar fields have to be to the outsourced?
To the what?
AEP, or whoever you're contracted to sell energy to.
Gotcha. Good question. When we're choosing a site, we're looking for existing grid infrastructure, utility lines or substations. So really, we have to be pretty close to that for a project to make sense. We're looking at an existing AEP transmission line up there in the northwest part of the county and tapping into that line, building a substation to be able to export the power in that spot.
Do you have any anticipation on how much power will come from this particular site?
Yeah, it's a good question. So we're expecting to build 163 megawatts of power. It's roughly enough power for 30,000 or so homes.
Just a few.
Yeah.
Denise, I just want to confirm for the record the resolution number on that one.
It's 034.
Thank you. If there are not any more questions from council, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any additional questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve. Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you.
Appreciate the time, thank you.
At this time, you need to set your public hearing. As Brad mentioned, your next meeting is October 26th. Would you have that as the first item agenda of your agenda, nine o'clock?
Yeah, yeah. Does that work for everybody? I guess it will, because you're going to be here anyway. Does that work for you on your timeline?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and set that. Do we need approval from council?
I think we can just go ahead and do it. I've already prepared the notice.
Okay, all right. That meeting will be, public hearing will be October 26th at nine o'clock. Okay, we're ready to proceed with the next one.
Right, ready for number three? Okay, we'll keep these going. All right, next, personal property tax abatement application is presented, or is requested, from Hawthorne Solar LLC. The equipment will be located on State Road 6728, just south of the town of Albany. It is not in the town limits of Albany. The final boundaries in the legal description will be provided prior to construction, but a map has been included with the application. The company's parent home address is 227 South Side Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina. The company is based out of Charlotte, North Carolina. The new equipment to be purchased is racking, protovol- protovolitalic solar modules, inverters, wiring, and other associated equipment for the production of solar electricity, very similar to the previous one. The new equipment will be utilized to develop a 70-megawatt solar-powered electric generation facility. Purchase price of the equipment is estimated at $88 million at this time. The new equipment is being brought from out of state. Currently, Ron, this is noted to your question with the previous abatement, the agricultural property at this time currently has an assessed value of $1,290 per acre, so we anticipate that to go up with the installation of the project. The company is current on all of their tax liabilities. They have no judgments, liens, or pending litigation against them. The company was incorporated Hawthorne Solar LLC in 2019 and is a fully-owned subsidiary of National Renewable Energy Corporation, Norenco, which has been in the business of developing solar fields since 2009 and has developed over 400 megawatts of installed solar capacity across the eastern United States.
Turn it off. Sorry.
New employees associated to be with this new abatement, over 200 workers are estimated to be employed during construction, and then they anticipate two to seven direct hires for operating and maintenance post-completion of the project. Starting hourly wage, $18 to $22 an hour. They're anticipating with some of the operating and maintenance jobs, $60,000 a year average salary for the jobs. So they have made their $150 check payment to the Delaware County Treasurer's office. They've completed their statement of benefits SB1. They have provided a property subject map of the location area. And related to the estimated, Baker Tilly, over the 10-year phased-in abatement request would be $3,340,150 abatement savings to the company. Estimated new revenue during the life of the project, over the life of the project, is So an excellent investment in our community. So with me today is Adrian Markowski with Norenco, who's happy to turn it over to you, Adrian.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you to council members for your time and interest this morning, and also to Brad for guiding us through the process and facilitating this morning's meeting. Brad mentioned, my name is Adrian Markosik, and I'm the project manager for Hawthorne Solar and also a senior manager of development for Norenco. Norenco was founded in 2009 in Charlotte, North Carolina, and we're a vertically-integrated solar developer, so we manage all aspects of solar development, starting from land acquisition, engineering, stakeholder relations, operations, and maintenance. We're also an independent power producer, and we have nearly four, or over 400 megawatts of installed solar capacity across the eastern United States. This makes us one of the largest privately-held renewable energy developers and construction companies. So solar technology continues to improve in its effectiveness, now to the point where it's often the lowest-cost producer of electricity in any general region. As a result, we're able to expand into newer markets like Delaware County, where many of the criteria for successful solar development exist, such as access to transmission and markets, site availability, and most importantly, forward-thinking landowners and stakeholders. It's this combination that lends us to believe that Hawthorne Solar will be a successful venture, and our confidence in the region extends beyond Delaware County into neighboring regions in Indiana, where we have two other utility-scale solar projects in late-stage development at this point. For Hawthorne Solar, we intend to develop approximately 355 acres in Delaware and Niles Townships centered around State Route 28, one and a half miles west of Albany. Once operational, Hawthorne Solar will generate approximately 75 megawatts of energy, or enough electricity, to power approximately 15,000 homes every single day. In addition to the benefit of providing clean, affordable, and renewable energy, Hawthorne Solar will be a positive contributor to the local economy. As Brad had noted, we anticipate approximately 200 jobs, skilled trade jobs during construction, and somewhere between two and seven full-time employees. The latter positions will be well-paying jobs with skill development opportunities in a fast-growing industry. Construction of Hawthorne Solar will present minimal impacts. Site preparation itself lasts just a few months, while the vast majority of time, approximately 12 months, is spent installing solar panels and also conducting the testing and operation of equipment.[1800.16] and operation of equipment. Once complete, solar farm is a passive, non-intrusive neighbor that generates no noise, light, pollution, or odors. Will not require any municipal improvements or services. It will instead be a net contributor to the local economy, increasing the local tax base. I believe the legislature, as was noted in past legislation, that taxes agricultural land has solar on it, somewhere around like $12,000 per acre in the region, so a tenfold increase approximately in terms of the tax base. And it's going to provide then an outsized benefit as well with respect to the personal property taxes being paid. So as a privately-held developer with years of experience developing solar farms and engaging with local communities, we understand the importance of working with everyone here in Delaware County and appreciate the time to spend this morning. We understand that, you know, this is going to be a collaborative and iterative process, so we look forward to continued meetings. And with that, I'd like to say thank you once again, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this point.
Just like to note that the county attorneys are in contact with the company's attorneys regarding the same road use agreement and decommissioning agreements that we addressed with the previous one. The company, as Adrian mentioned, is in contact with the property owners, and any concerns, please relay those back to me. I'll notice the company, and then the company can address those with the landowners.
I'm curious, is that when you create this electricity, we'll call it voltage, amperage, does the utility actually buy the current from your company, and you don't have to worry about transformers and overhead lines and all that stuff?
So we're going to be tapping into the existing grid. All of, anytime there's an energy project, has to be coordinated with multiple entities, including the local utility, so we're working with them to ensure that, you know, we're going to be complying with all required regulations and meeting all the necessary requirements.
But, Ron.
This seems awful complicated. I installed, actually, I went to Waco, Texas in the 70s and got a franchise to put in hot water heaters, two or three collectors per house, and this just fascinates me that you can do what you're doing. But I just was curious as to how you transmit this after you, after you.
Yeah, just going to go into the local grid. You know, the concern really is the stability of the grid. You know, anytime there's any type of brownout or blackout, there's potential for billions of dollars of damage. So as a result, all of these developments are highly studied, and they're looking at every single potential scenario that could present an issue. So there's an intensive study process that's up to, well, actually, I think we're probably in our third year at this point, where they're looking at all these issues. And like I said, it's, it's going to be going into the AEP grid, but there's other purchasers of the power that are going to be set up in advance. But at the end of the day, all the electrons, they all intermingle, so you can't really, you know.
Yeah, because actually, you could be selling to another utility and carrying it on AEP lines, right?
Correct, yes.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
So 67 and 28 in that general area, that's a pretty high-traffic area. Do you have any plans for any visual aesthetics around the perimeter of the property once it's developed, such as landscaping, like a tree, tree shield or anything like that? Or are we just going to drive by and see rows of solar panels, or will it be obscured with landscaping?
Sure, that's one of the conversations that still needs to be held with the county. We understand there's requirements within the zoning ordinance, and obviously, our intent is to comply with the zoning ordinance and to work with the individuals who live in the area as well.
The ordinance to the Delaware County Planning Commission, under Marta's leadership, is very clear on the screening aspects of these, and I can't recite it off the top of my head, Marta, but I know that we fully intend for them to comply within the, within that ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So I'm looking at the map, and it appears, are there like multiple plots of land where this is going? It's not like one massive.
Correct.
What is it, 355 acres in one big plot? It looks like it's multiple little boxes, like maybe down by the dragway, or not by...
Yeah, there's four separate property owners. We try to make it as contiguous as possible, but, you know, occasionally, that's not possible. But all the properties are at least adjacent to one another.
So we're just like looking at the map. So it looks like some of it's there along 28, some over by like where the Albany Veterinary Clinic is, and then up just north of Black Cemetery Road?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Runs north and south, kind of centered around 28.
How close is it to the cemetery?
I think the cemetery is to the west of it. I don't remember the exact buffer that we have between it, but I believe there is a forested area that runs between, and there's no intention to clear that, that forested area.
Brad, you know...
Well, go ahead.
Do you know whether IMI has any plans for that area?
I do not.
Is that the gravel developer?
Yes.
Yes, they have no plans for that area. Their gravel development is west of where we are planning our project. So we have been in coordination and communication with them.
Okay, all right.
Well, I think some of the questions have stemmed around, you know, what happens on these projects, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Marta, but you guys have established requirements for everybody, and I think those have been well-accepted at this point, anyway, that there weren't too many issues from either the companies or the public on those, and several meetings were, were held through the Planning Commission and I believe the Commissioner's Office as well.
There are buffering requirements, and there is a requirement for pollinators throughout the project. There, we're using...
Marta, you may have to get up and talk, I'm sorry. We've got to be able to hear you. Denise has to be able to hear you later.
Marta Moody, Executive Director of Plank Commission. The zoning ordinance does include a lot of buffering requirements, planting requirements, protection of existing tree stands requirements, as well as a requirement for the planting of pollinators throughout the project. What that means is that you would see like flowering plants all throughout the project, and there, we're using, Purdue put out a checklist for the planting of pollinators, and you have to meet their criteria to cover at least, I believe it's 70 or 80% of that pollinator checklist to comply with the ordinance requirements, so.
Thank you. And I think you've already covered this in your presentation, but you guys, I mean, from my perspective, you guys are in, I've already done this in other areas, this isn't your first time around.
Correct. We have over 400 megawatts of installed capacity. I think our most, our most recent project was a few smaller project, but we have over 100-megawatt solar farm in South Carolina, which is currently the largest facility in South Carolina.
And the same thing applies to decommissioning that's in the, in the agreement?
Correct, yes. We have agreements with our landowners, and as Inverge stated, there's a requirement within the ordinance for a surety bond, and obviously, we intend to comply with all requirements.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Your goal is, I think this really all started out as an environmental issue to get away from fossil fuels, and you're talking about quite a few dollars here to put one of these solar farms in place. How is this going to affect the local consumer of electricity? Will it be more economical or less economical?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So one of the great things about solar is that it shaves peak costs. So often, on the hot days, you, where electricity usage is at its highest, you have to turn on natural gas peaker plants. And whereas most generators are charging, you know, maybe $10, $20, $30 per megawatt, at that point, you're getting to thousands of dollars of megawatts per hour, or I'm sorry, thousands of dollars per megawatt at that point. So solar is at its peak performance during those high-energy usage hours, and it's actually going to be its most efficient as well, and that our cost is always going to be the lowest. It's actually going to save consumers money at the end of the day.
So will the, will the individuals, they'll be variable based on your supply, or will AEP or Duke or someone like that be in control of what our local bill is going to be?
Yeah, so we're just a small part of the overall energy mixture, but it's going to have the ability to affect prices, but it's not going to drive the prices at the end of the day. But it shouldn't increase prices for the average consumer.
Ron, you're not going to see your electric bill go down.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm fascinated by it. When I got really involved in this, when I was building homes, I, the people in Waco, Texas, I built it around, they were called Solar King Company. They were just trying their best to convert sun power to electricity, what they called photovoltaic or something like that. And now you're, you're, the successors of that have conquered that. Now we've got different obstacles in the way, I guess you would say, getting a big enough field to make it pay.
Sure.
Denise?
Three collectors on a house wasn't too tough.
35.
The resolution number on that?
35.
36.
36. Should be 36.
Yeah, you're right, 36.
Okay, so that'll be 2021, resolution number 2021-36. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any additional questions? I kind of, I think I might have cut you off a little bit there. No? Okay. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you, council. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the public hearing on this will also be on the 26th at 9 o'clock.
Okay. Public hearing on this will be the 26th at 9 o'clock as well.
Those that notices are need be, they can email them to you.
Okay.
That's October 26th, 9 a.m. Okay, we're ready for the transfer. Again, we don't have any ordinances on here, so we're ready for the transfer, start with the transfers. We have...
Okay, I need to ask a favor.
Okay.
If we could go straight to Addendum 3, please. The very first one is holding up payroll being posted, and she's waiting on us to call her.
Okay.
Statewide 911, 324 telephone, minus $15,000, 197 overtime, plus $15,000, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion on this? This was, we found this out...
Yesterday.
Yesterday on this, and this was not heard in the, in the finance meeting. This was, was done after the finance meeting. So any questions from council?
We'll just take this as a recommendation from the auditor, right?
Yes. They need this to pay their overtime, or they'll have to wait till the end of October.
No questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
You want to go ahead and finish this one?
Sure.
Since we're here, okay. Coroner, 241, evidence, containers and bags, plus $3,490.10. 242, supplies, minus $686.35. 391, coroner dues, minus $450. 392, schooling, minus $1,353.75. 323, travel, minus $1,000, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, I didn't hear where that second. Ballard?
Jane.
Jane, okay.
Second.
This one also didn't go through Finance Committee. Denise, with this one happened yesterday as well. I called Rick and talked to Rick, and they need this to happen today if possible. They've made transfers within their budget to do this, that they have told, told me on the phone that they won't need to be coming back to ask for these by the end of the year, correct?
Right.
Okay. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you.
Back to the regular first transfer. Commissioners, 173 health insurance, minus $50,000. 325 utilities, plus $50,000, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Hang on here, let me get to the right page. Okay, I got a motion from Piper, from Webb, second from Piper.
Piper first.
All right.
Second, Webb.
Oh, okay, motion from Piper, the second was from Webb. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioners, B124 Veteran Service Officer, minus $9,167.17. C124 Veteran Service Officer, plus $9,167.17, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Mary Chambers. You guys are easy to get along with today. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Communication Center, B130 Communication Tech, minus $3,000. 194 Training, plus $3,000, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ballard, me and Ballard.
Motion, okay. Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council? I've got a note in here from Finance that this is training. Obviously, it says that, I don't know. All right. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
4D Support, C107, minus $6,531.85. D107, plus $6,531.85, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you. Jail, A133, minus $10,661.16. B133, minus, or plus $10,661.16. A133... A 133, minus five hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixteen cents. To D 105, plus five sixty-six sixteen. D 116, minus ten thousand two fifty-seven. E 116, plus ten thousand two fifty-seven. A 121, minus ten thousand three oh five thirty. B 121, plus ten thousand three oh five thirty. C 101, minus eight thousand one fifteen fifty-five. D 101, plus eight thousand one fifteen fifty-five. C 131, minus eight thousand three seventy-three fifteen. D 131, plus eight thousand three seventy-three fifteen, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from counsel?
I have a question. So, does A 133, was that five sixty-six sixteen longevity?
I do believe that was part of the roll-in that we ran into where he was short.
Roll-in.
So I had to take and bring it down.
Okay.
What I call roll-in, sorry.
Yeah, you're fine.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Public defender, 211, office supplies, plus three thousand. 326 investigative fees, minus three thousand, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from...
Ballard.
Ballard? Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Before you read this one in, hang on just a minute here. Do we need to?
Oh.
We've tabled this.
It's going to come off the table.
Need to, we need to...
I'll move to remove from the table.
Second.
All right, got a motion to remove from the table. This transfer from last month, from Piper.
And Webb.
And Webb, on the second.
Can you vote on that?
Any questions on, yeah, let's go ahead and vote on that. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Now, Donna, go ahead.
Okay, D 106, secretary, plus five thousand, I'm sorry, plus one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. I don't think that should say D 106. That should just say 323 travel expense, minus one thousand five eighty-seven forty-six, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. We did get this cleared up, and this transfer would be okay with, I think, State Board of Accounts or whoever we were questioning with in Purdue.
Yep.
So, this was the underpay on the salary, correct? And once I corrected it?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, this is the corrected amount that the employee in that office is owed or due, I guess.
And the question was, since it was a year prior, and the books were closed, whether we could do that or not.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you for working with us to get that back.
Sheriff, C 127, minus thirteen thousand two thirty-three fifty-six. D 127, plus thirteen thousand two thirty-three fifty-six. A 112, minus sixteen thousand seven thirty-four-five. B 112, plus sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four-five, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Low at jail, C 115, minus eight thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. D 115, plus eight thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. And the next two have been withdrawn.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Chambers. Questions from counsel?
Should we read those others into the record? Mr. Hughes, the ones that have been withdrawn?
We don't need to know.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
GIS map, 241, computer support, minus eighteen thousand. 310, professional services, plus eighteen thousand, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. I think Kyle told us you were going to be available if we have questions on this, Marta?
No, I'm the one that filed.
Or was this yours? Oh, this was yours, yep, something else. All right. Any questions from counsel? Got a motion and a second on that, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Highway, A 125, truck driver, minus ten thousand two eleven eighty-eight. B 125, truck driver, plus ten thousand two eleven eighty-eight, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Statewide, 911, 324 telephone, minus sixty-eight thousand. 442, building equipment, plus sixty-eight thousand, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from counsel? This is a, just for everybody's information, I believe this is a generator?
Correct.
That's what I've got written down. Roll call, please, Steve.
Hold up just a second.
Yep.
Very generated, we just replaced our generator, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Fairgrounds, 210, general supplies, plus fifteen hundred. 330, advertising, minus fifteen hundred, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper.
Second from Ron.
Second from Ron. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, the first addendum, this commissioners, 173, health insurance, minus fifteen thousand, 198, part-time, plus fifteen thousand, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from counsel? There was some discussion in Finance Committee meeting. This was an amount, I guess, that was brought to us earlier. We reduced that amount. And they're back with a transfer out of health insurance. Roll call, please, Steve. Oh, did you have, okay, sorry. I saw you move in that direction.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Highway, B 131, truck driver, minus fifteen thousand five seventeen forty-one. C 131, truck driver, plus fifteen thousand five seventeen forty-one, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Chambers. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
DOC grant, 1122, 197, part-time, minus twenty thousand. 171, FICA, plus ten thousand. 172, perf, plus ten thousand, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Circuit Court, D 146, Assistant Court Reporter, minus seven thousand seven forty-four eighty-four. E 146, Assistant, oh, Assistant Court Reporter, plus seven thousand seven forty-four eighty-four, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Threw me there.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. That was a misspell on the agenda.
Yeah, it kind of stuttered me.
Just so you know, D 146 and E 146 are the same Assistant Court Reporter. Questions from counsel? We got a motion and a second on that.
Yes.
All right. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, your second addendum, EMS, C 118, minus nine thousand seven seventy-eight seventeen. D 118, plus nine thousand seven seventy-eight seventeen. A 129, minus eight thousand five oh three thirty-five. B 129, plus eight thousand five oh three thirty-five. C 147, minus fifteen thousand five twelve sixty-seven. D 147, plus fifteen thousand five twelve sixty-seven, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, financial agenda. American Rescue Plan.
Yeah, hold off on that. We're going to move that one down, or set that one aside, I guess. We're gonna move that one down and go through the rest of these first.
Okay, then let's go to Kim Building. 212 Security Badges, $496. 441 Equipment, $1,517. Total request, $2,013.
Move to approve? Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Chambers. I've got a note on here, these are programming the key fobs. I don't know, Donna, I've got your name written down, but I can't remember what we were gonna ask you about that. If anything. Any questions from counsel on that?
I think we discussed it, finance.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Juvenile Detention Alternative Grant. 200 miscellaneous supplies, $733. 201 Coordinator Supplies, $400. 202 Food Items, $2,009. 304 Electronic Monitoring, $11,700. 335 Contracts, MOU, $33,300. 340 Travel and Training, $4,158. 410 Equipment, $2,700. Total Request, $55,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Questions from counsel?
Yeah, so Donna had handed out our sheets about what's available on each fund, and so this request, I see, is for $55,000. However, I'm seeing in your spreadsheet, Donna, they have a surplus of $34,100.
Because when, right before we came to the meeting, we got the copy of the new grant, which would increase the total income by $55,000.
Okay, great.
We didn't have it on hand last night when I did this, so we got it right before we came upstairs, so...
Perfect, so the funds are there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for...
Good catch, yeah.
Nobody overlooks those.
After you called us out on it, I made sure I'm like honed in.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any questions from coun... other questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Good job, grasshopper.
Yeah. Courtney, Counsel, alcohol abuse. 310 Executive Director, $11,000. And these are all on 310, but they're broken down. 310 Office Supplies, $6,000. 310 Prevention Education Grants, $20,000. 310 Intervention Treatment Grants, $20,000. 310 Justice Law Enforcement Grants, $19,000. Total Request, $76,486.
Move to approve?
That, hang on, before we get a second on that. That law enforcement grants was $19,486, but you said $19,000?
No, I'm sorry.
Is that $19,486?
$19,486.
Okay, got a motion from Piper. Need a second.
Second.
Second from Lassiter.
Yes.
I'm getting better. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you.
Airgrounds, 442 Equipment Sprinkler System, Hurtland Hall. The request has been reduced to $27,000. For total request, $27,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from...
Ballard.
Ballard. Questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Local Road Street, 312 Contractual Services, $63,460. Total Request, $63,460.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Just for everybody's information, at the finance meeting, this was a question. This is a striping contract to do the striping on the county roads. Correct?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
2501 Project Income, 311 Contract Monitoring Clients, $56,000. Total Request, $56,000.
Move to approve? Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Chambers. Questions from counsel?
Well, again, Donna's spreadsheet is saying that they're in the hole, $3,501.
I adjusted, if you recall during budget hearings, they had to make some reductions. Plus, they came up with an extra $100,000 in revenue, which I increased. Plus, I got $35,000 last week that they were able to take from another fund to move the cash over to this fund. And so I've updated all the revenue amounts that I was given. So I show that they're short $3,500. Now, if you take in consideration the reduction of, I don't know, three or four line items that we're gonna address at budget, they would have available $41,000. But then I'm not real sure what that's gonna do to the budget next year because I've gotta get into that system, and I would have to add this $56,000. So if we do that, that might show a shortage then for to approve the 2022 budget.
How can we approve this request if there's not enough funds?
The transfer that I made a minute ago, too, will help to reduce the project income by $20,000 because we're using that money into FICA and PERF instead of using it out of 2501 FICA and PERF.
So then that's not actually 56, if it reduces it 20 grand? Or am I not understanding?
It's just less cash that we'll be using, so...
Based on the information from the auditor's office, though, we can't approve your total request because the auditor's records show that you're 3501 in the red. So we would have to amend that amount by 3501.
Okay, then let's do that for right now.
And then fix it, I mean, when you get more money in. We can't do it now, I don't think, my... Right, Mr....
Yes.
What was the request?
How much are they?
We need to take...
Minus $3,501.
Can we reduce that amount, Elizabeth?
Yes.
They don't have the money to fund it. They're short $3,501.
That's why I mean if they reduce that request by $3,501.
Well, they'd still be zero. Yeah, excuse me, yeah.
No, they're, yeah. You can't approve it, period.
Right.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is even if you reduced it from the $56,000 to whatever that'd be, 525 or 52499, we can't do that neither?
Well, then they'd have zero. And then you have, if you make that negative, back to zero, then you have zero money available to pay the 56.
I'm saying right now, with all the information they've given me, with their budget, they're short of funding by $3,501 this year. But they made reductions in three accounts at budget hearings last...
Couple weeks ago?
I don't know, two weeks ago, to reduce some of the current expenses so they could meet next year's budget funding. So if you consider that, they would have an extra $41,000. But then you also gotta consider, I've got to, if you give this additional appropriation of $56,000, I now have to add that back in. So there's, either way, they're still gonna be short. They don't have the funds to do this.
Can I reduce what I'm asking? Would that help?
There's zero dollars, period.
So you're saying they're negative from zero?
Yes.
They're $3,500 negative now, so they can't ask for more money?
Right. And I'm saying with the $3,500 that I'm showing, and I added your additional $100,000 that you come up with two weeks ago, plus I added the $35,000 additional money that they just found out they could move from one fund to another, I added that in here, too. And what I'm saying is with the reductions that, they made reductions, I forgot I brought this with me, of $44,913 to the current budget for next year that's gonna be in this resolution during the pass. So with that reduction, if I take off the $3,501 that I'm showing, they're in the red, that leaves $41,412. But the request is for $56,000, which if you approve, I've now gotta go in and change all the budget stuff for next year and show that additional appropriation of $56,000. So then it's gonna show them back in the red again.
Well, and we haven't approved the budget. I mean, that's still subject to approval at this point, so I don't know how we use that amount from a budget, the budget that's not approved...
Right.
...right now, so... Maybe we could either deny this request, or we could table it and let them try and figure it out for next month.
Well, they're gonna come up with more money somewhere.
Can I ask for it to be tabled?
You can ask, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll motion that we table.
I'll second the motion.
Could you just pull it instead of table?
We could. We could just pull the request instead of tableing it. That's a... Well, we've got a motion to table at this point, a motion and a second.
All right.
Right, now you have a motion.
I've got a motion.
To approve.
Not to table.
We just, a motion was just made from Piper to table it, and a second from Webb. And a motion to table ends discussion.
Okay.
Yep. So we'll need a roll call on the motion to table.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, Donna, we're ready for sales disclosure, fine.
Oh, you don't have to vote on the other motion?
No.
Okay. Okay, sales disclosure. 362 Software, $1,595. 393 Schooling, $2,000. 441 Monitor Replacement, $700. Total Request, $4,295.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from counsel?
We'll have to think about that a while. For the auditor. Oh, it's...
Oh, that's...
Sir Michael.
I'm sorry.
You can ask him some other time.
Yeah, you got any questions? Got any questions for James?
Trying to be funny, and it didn't work.
Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Well, of course.
Alexander.
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Good thing I'd voted against him.
So are we going back to...
ARP.
Yeah, let's take a quick, you guys wanna take a quick break? Five minutes and do what we need to do, and that'll give them an opportunity to... I see Jenny running alley at the office right now, running down the hallway right now to get back.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order out of recess.
And in Finance Committee, we've got the Commissioners' approval for, or the Commissioners' request in there. What we've kind of talked through at Finance Committee was having the Commissioners, or John come up and present what they've got with ARP plan. So we put that on the agenda for the American Rescue Plan presentation. James, are you going to...
Joe.
Or Joe? Okay, there we go.
Even better than John and James.[571.04][571.04](Laughter)
Yeah, yeah. We're hiding.
Although James will stand right behind me to make me regret saying that.[577.66][577.66](Laughter) So, I'm going to keep it pretty short and simple. You guys have all seen the plan, obviously. Finance Committee hashed it out a little bit. So essentially, all we're really asking for now is the first year's appropriation. And then any plan-specific questions you guys will have, we're happy to answer.
Have we seen the latest version?
It was sent out.
Yeah. It was approved at the last Commissioners' meeting, so last Monday, I think. And I think... Yeah, Denise sent it out by email pretty quickly thereafter.
Yeah, and we're not asking for the whole $11 million for this year. It's just what's in the plan now, which is just over a little 8 million. And if we have to come back to ask you guys for appropriations, to do anything with the other $3 million, we will come back to you guys. Each time we have anything, even next year, we will come back and ask you for the appropriation. We don't want to come in here and just ask right off the bat, either give us the full 11 or the full 12. We want you guys to know what each... How the money is actually being spent. So, we're just asking for what's in the plan right now, which is just a little bit over 8 million. That way, if anything else comes up, because somebody said that they have to keep like a percentage for auditor purposes.
10%.
Okay.
They are recommending withholding 10%.
Right. So, we're only doing, asking for 8 million today, well, a little over 8 million, which we'll leave around probably a little over 2 million. There's your 10%. That's still sitting there if we have to hold it back. But we have a lot of sewage and water projects in here, and I know Ron's been a Commissioner and stuff, and sometimes it takes a while to get the designs and everything done. Could take six, eight months to get them done. This, we have to have, I believe the project's done by 2026.
It has to be encumbered money by 20, into 2024.
Right. So, we need to get these projects started as soon as we can, because I would like to see them all done by 2026. We've waited so long because we wanted to make sure that anything we had in this plan, we was not going to have to pay back. We've went through it, hate to say it, but every version. I believe we've sat down, we've talked and discussed it and everything, but we have left money in there just in case, like the 10%, what you guys was talking about. Only thing we're asking today is just the appropriation for what we have here in this plan.
Just to be clear, the appropriation for what we have in this plan for the 2021 plan year. The plan includes 2022 project money, but that will be a separate appropriation next year.
So, I'm just, when I'm looking at this spreadsheet, to just see the handful of items here. So, it's the... I'll read them out loud so everyone can hear. But what I have is the mental health and rehabilitation, court mediation programs, lodging and tourism, health department IT and clinic, air grounds, Oakville Mount Summit design, is that a sewage project?
Yes.
And then Royerton Relief Sewer Design, Town of Yorktown Sewer in Northwest Quadrant, Town of Albany Water Project along State Road 28, Town of Daleville Water and Sewer Project, Daleville Storm Water Project, Town Hall, Justice Center, EMS Equipment and PPE, and Revenue Replacement for 2020 is left blank at this point. So, those are the items that are included in this particular request.
Yes.
And that comes out to $8,352,000. So, one of my, one of my questions, actually, the first thing I know, I'd received, most of us on the council had received an email from Councilman Webb pertaining to the lodging and tourism. That million dollars is not for the Muncie Visitors Bureau. That's for them to divvy out.
Right. That does not go to the Muncie Visitors Bureau. That...
Their board is in charge of it.
Yeah, their board is going to be over issuing money out to like hotels that we have, that's outside the city limits in the county, also restaurants that's outside the city limits that's out in the county area. So, that's where that money is going to go to.
And one of the things I haven't seen, so I apologize if it's been sent and I've missed it, but I haven't seen what kind of documentation, let's say, the Visitors Bureau Board has to go through the process of receiving grants, accepting, you know, who's going to receive those, and then following, tracking where that money goes. Do we have software we're investing in, or how are we managing that process? Just because when it does come to the audit, I want to make sure that we are free and clear of any, having to repay any, any of those funds.
It'll be just like a grant application. They'll fill out an application. They will turn it to the Visitors Bureau. It will have to actually also be approved by the Commissioners, and also our attorneys will go over that.
Okay.
So, it's not that we're just going to, they're going to come up and say, "We need $100,000. We're going to issue them a check for $100,000." There are steps that they're going to have to go through to get that money. Plus, they are going to have to prove where the money went.
And those have already been created and generated, and the boards are aware of those processes? Okay. And then is the auditor included in any of this so that they are in tune? Because I know there was a little bit of miscommunication, I think, with the CARES money. I want to make sure everyone's on the same page with this.
I believe John has been in contact with the Auditor's Office on certain areas.
Okay. He has not?
No.
Well, I think that's, the concern about this is before we appropriate any of this money, we want to make sure that, and we've been told this, I think, even recently, I think, you know, down at AIC, I think Jane, or somebody, Jane or Ed Carroll or somebody indicated that we've got to have accounting for this in place, because the last thing we want to do is put any of this money out there that we would have to fund. And I guess I would want to know whose responsibility, I mean, we need to make that clear. It needs to be in writing, I think. Make it clear on whose responsibility it is to keep the records on this and make sure that all those, whoever those are, are aware that that is their responsibility and have a way to track all this.
Right.
Donna, what were you going to say?
Well, I was, I was just going to give you the information we were given last week at school.
He was going to be in here, but I, we went a little long so far.
Yeah, because, I mean, four of us went to this meeting, but they were talking about any, any money that's given to anyone. They are now considered sub-receipients of this grant. They have to file a report, which we're assuming quarterly. That was never really clear, but we have to do it quarterly. Steve does. So, anything that, any money that anybody gets are now considered sub-receipients. So, they have to fill out a report. That report then has to be filed with someone. This is what Ed and I discussed yesterday, because in the meeting, they didn't say this report is filed with the Commissioners, and then the Commissioners pass it over to the auditor, or if this report's filed directly with the auditor. Ed or I, neither one got out of that meeting who that report's supposed to be filed with, only that this report, they have to fill out the report on, in detail, everything that they spent that money for. Then in turn, when Steve does a quarterly report, he has to do that. But, like I said, we never did figure out who this report's supposed to come back to. But eventually, it's, it's got to get to the auditor somehow. And we're, we were both assuming it was quarterly, because we have to do it quarterly. So, I mean, I can't really answer that thoroughly unless Joe can.
Well, there are supposed to be checks and balances. You are right.
Right.
Whoever receives the money, they have to keep track of the money, like I said, other money and where the money is spent.
Yep.
Then they have to report it back to the Commissioners.
Is that who this?
Yeah, they're supposed to report it back to us, and then we will forward it to the Auditor's Office. It, we've went through this stuff, and I mean, it's taken forever for us to get to this point. I mean, we could have came out like in May, as soon as the money was here, and said, "Hey, we got this plan. We're going to do this." But we wanted to make sure everything, we had all of our ducks in a row. But yes, there is, has to be accounting done, which the money, when it gets appropriated, like I say, they have to keep track of that. They have to report it back. Then we will forward everything to the Auditor's Office.
Well, and I think the first, the first quarterly report you guys have already, already filed or had to file because of the deadline, or the date deadline that was in there. Of course, none of the money's been spent to this, this point. But I guess I want to make sure you guys are comfortable with where we're, how this is going to be done, because again, I mean, the last thing we want to do is end up at a reporting deadline or a date that we can't comply with.
I think we have, do we have Training Friday? Did we read an email from Ed? He set up some type of Training Friday on ARP reporting.
I didn't have a chance reading my emails this morning. Yeah.
I think he set up something with some type of training that he did yesterday, or I think it was yesterday he did it.
We talked about it yesterday afternoon, so.
Like the other report we did, we had no information to put in whatsoever. So, we just put zero down for everything. I mean, we had no, nothing. But it was due August 31st, and so we had to get it submitted. We didn't want to take a chance on, you know, losing our funding that we just got. And so, the whole report is zero. I put a note in the report that we might have to amend it.
Yeah, so the plan right now, and that'll be the same basic report you'll file at the end of October as well, because no money's been spent yet. So, everything will be zero. The plan as it's written is actually written using the Treasury's template for reporting. So ideally, my thought when we put this together was the Auditor's Office will literally just fill in the table with the new numbers. So, there's going to be a left column and a right column. Left column is how much we spent up to a certain date. The right column is everything we've spent since the last report. So, right now, everything in the right column's going to be zero. Everything in the left column's going to be zero. But like I said, ideally from an administrative ease standpoint, it'll just be the auditor fills in that table and sends it on, and that's it, ideally. And then reporting, like I said, is quarterly. I think we would anticipate any sub-receipients reporting quarterly as well, because otherwise we'll have stale information to put in, well, the auditor will have stale information for the report, and we need to make sure that it's up to date. So, I do think that's the anticipated outcome with the sub-recipient reporting.
And we do have some businesses, restaurants, that are requesting money now, but we can't do anything until funds are appropriated.
At school last week, there were a lot of new vendors, and I didn't pick up on this one. Didn't, one of you ladies or Ed say there was a software, there was a vendor with software there to track? Must have been Ed. Somebody I was talking...
Dean, I can get with Ed and talk to him privately.
Somebody I was talking to down there. You know, a few years ago, when we had the ice storm, and I'm sure Donna's probably the only one's going to remember this.
You're making me sound like Ron.
I know. I know. Bobby Adams was hired to take care of all of the FEMA funds. And Donna, how far off was he on what the feds?
Not very much, was he? He was on top of that stuff. Very good.
I've done a lot of projects here in the county. I think a lot of units have worked with me on a lot of the projects. I haven't been off on anything.
Well, James, the, the thing that bothers me is the ambiguity of some of these line items. And you can go right to the first line, and it says, "Mental health and rehabilitation, $1,500,000." Now, if that was my money, and I kind of have been accused before of treating this county money as though it was my own, and I took that as a compliment, I wouldn't know where that money was going. Was it for physical structure? Is it for...
Would you like me to explain it to you?
Where's, where's that million and a half going?
Would you like for me to explain it to you, Ron?
Well, yeah, but I, I'm not going to vote yes for a million and a half if I don't have that in writing.
Yeah, it's going to be to re, to build out mental health and addiction part out at the new Justice Center. And a portion of it's also going to help to get it started and up and going. Since the state closed down a lot of our hospitals, law enforcement, we deal with a lot of people that has mental problems. And honestly, jail's not a place for them. If we can get somewhere where we can take these individuals, where they can get counseling and they can get help, that's what we need to do. That's where that money is going to go to.
And you're going to put that same facility in the, in the building, the courts and the clerk?
There's a place, you can go on YouTube, Davison County from, in Nashville. They have the same program that we want to implement out here. And it's, it's been a good program for them. But we need to do something instead of continually to lock these people up in jail. A lot of the citizens, when we built that place, was asking for something. And honestly, we need to do something. And, you know, we have the money from the federal government, and yes, these are tax dollars. I agree with everybody, because they come from somewhere. They just don't come out of the air. But as a Commissioner, been trying to rebuild this community from where it's been, been trying to bring back manufacturing to this community. We need workers in this community. We need to help people get back on track. So, if it's spending $1.5 million to help people get their lives back together, to me, it's well worth it.
I didn't say I didn't agree with that. I just don't understand where this money's going.
It's going to go to do the build-out and help get that mental health and addiction started.
And the plan itself, it states, "Funding for build-out at the Justice Center Rehabilitation Facility may be a use. This will be a partnership with the City of Muncie, since the issue affects both populations." So, it's something that, you know, the city has money set aside as well.
Right. We have been talking, talking to the city. I've talked with Jeff Robinson. They've set aside like $2 million, but there's really not anywhere we can go until we get funds appropriated. You know, they...
This is a one-shot deal, James. Where are you going to get it to operate in perpetuity? Where, where's the money come from running this center?
You can generate funding from that facility. That will help do that. Also, your, the state, we've been in contact with the state, and the state's going to come in and help us. And we have also looking at Meridian Services to come in and help.
I want to make sure I heard you correctly. The city has set aside $2 million?
Yeah, for services.
Just randomly out of nowhere? I mean, where did...
In their plan, they have $2 million in their ARP plan for this. Yeah, and, and I've been working on this with the sheriff for, sheriff what, two years? Year and a half? But we didn't have the money to actually go in and do the build-out. Now, the money's there. So...
And the need is there.
Mm-hmm.
If I could...
Go ahead.
First, I wanted to offer my, my feedback, but I wanted to make, ask a question first. With the plan being a work and breathing document that will constantly be updated and changed, will the primary vision for the funds change once they're approved?
No. Now, now, if we have $1.5 million in there, say we can go in there and we can do it for $1.2, that frees up $300,000. Could that be moved to another project to help it out? Absolutely. But honestly, looking at what we need to do to that facility and to get it up and running, it's probably going to cost the 1.5, and plus, we'll probably work with the city to get things done.
What's the million dollars for the Justice Center for?
It's not just for the Justice Center. It's for the Justice Center, and it's for this building, because we have some updates here that we need to do, and eventually probably have to put a new roof on the facility that we have out on Dilson.
Well, what I was going to say a minute ago, and see how I word this. I, I know you guys have put a lot of time into this, and I'm not going to sit up here and pretend that I have anywhere near the experience or, or the vision to come up with a better plan. When I'm looking at the plan, and I've shared this, I actually pretty much support everything on here. I really like the mental health and rehabilitation. The only thing that it's really hanging me up, again, this is my opinion, and I'm not undermining anyone else's plan, is the 4.5 for the Oakville project. And I, and I know that we have to do the infrastructure and do the improvements on the infrastructure, and I think that's a wise way to use the... and I think that's a wise way to use the funds. I guess what's hanging me up is it's such a large amount for infrastructure. Me personally, my preference would be all of this with the removal of the Oakville plan. And I think with that four and a half, because I was looking up, because I went to that conference for the Association of County Councils, and they gave us a list, and there's a whole bunch. I highlighted a whole bunch of different programs locally, like mental health, substance abuse, nonprofit aids, and education, food programs, mortgage programs. So I like all of that. I was just kind of hoping we could get some of it for some of that. And for me, it would have been out of the Oakville plan. So I just wanted to kind of just voice that, and I appreciate you guys putting all that together. That was just my thought process on that.
Do you want to explain the Oakville project? So those who are watching know what all is included.
I got two from the Regional Wastewater. They can explain that project to you.
Thank you.
Bill Walters, Regional Wastewater. The Oakville project is to give us the southwest area so we can service those customers there. Liberty is up above pretty much center of the county, north a little bit. And then you go to the east, and you've got Daleville over there. So we have an area there that is underserved. This would go to Somerville down that way, would allow us to branch out over to Prairie Creek and all of those areas over there, instead of having pump and hauls or down systems. That's what it's about, to drive the cost down. They have a nice plant over there, have plenty of capacity, and can take all the flow that we can send them from that way. So the purpose of the Oakville plant was to get Oakville on, plus, then we can spread from there going up towards Prairie Creek and over to the west, and then a little bit towards the east, because right now we go all the way over to Daleville.
And just to add to that, as you're all aware, obviously, this is a health and sanitary condition when you're dealing with folks that aren't able to get onto a sanitary sewer system. They're using underground septic systems. Often, those will fail. This was an opportunity to look at expansion, know that we have an area in Delaware County that we could expand and have additional growth with homes, but also have a safe and sanitary system to provide those services for folks that makes it, that takes away some long-term concerns as far as having issues that are dealing with those sanitary septic systems failing in the long run.
And have you guys, on your feedback, I'm sure you probably, I'm sure there's probably a lot of residents that are excited about it, and there's probably some that aren't. Have you got a lot of negative feedback as far as opposed to it?
I've gotten no negative feedback. I've been in meetings in all three, including Springport and Mount Summit. Everybody is very excited about the possibility of the project. It will bring relief to not only just us, but some of those people in that rural area in Henry County going down that vein into Mount Summit. They're facing the same situations we're facing up here.
And the initial project, can you say how many homes that would serve?
Oh, you're going to catch me there. I didn't write this down. What was it? Around Oakville's right at 100, and then there's another 33 going in to Springport. But then the possibility, I mean, when the veins come off of the main line, you're looking at another 300 to 400 homes over there. What that does is help keep driving the cost down. If you've watched what Delaware County Regional Waste does with our regrouping the plan in the north, we drove rates down in the Rorseton, DeSoto area, Daleville, where I did go it up, but we had to level across the board. We can continue to increase the customers on it, drive the flow down. That drives the cost down across the board for everybody.
You have a question on that, did you say?
I do have a question.
You'll have to come up, you'll have to come up to the mic to, sorry.
Thank you, Bill.
I know this isn't a public hearing, but I do have a question, because I'm in that area that he spoke of. All the way down to Henry County, all the way out past the reservoir, you're talking about dozens of square miles. And I wondered if the same thing, I think, that Ryan asked, of all of those people that you plan on bringing into this project, how many of those have been actually polled? Do you want this? Do you not want this? Because I've never lived in a house that didn't have a septic system. I don't want to get put on a sewer system. I don't want a $50 or an $80 or $100 bill every single month when there's absolutely nothing wrong with my septic system. So I wonder, of all the people, your new customers, how many of those have you polled and said, "Do you want this?" Because I don't. I'm just telling you, I don't. So like I said, I know this isn't a public hearing. I appreciate you letting me ask that question.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought you had an issue with something to do with the Sheriff's Department Sheriff. I'm sorry.
So I apologize. I'm Pete Olson. I represent the town of Yorktown, so I'm here for dual features. I also sit on the Delaware County Regional Waste. I failed to introduce myself. Sheriff Skinner's correct. We haven't polled anybody. What we know is that in the last five years on the Delaware County Regional Waste, we've seen a number of issues coming out of Cowan that ultimately, we know that we have a number of septic systems in the county that are starting to fail, and we're having problems with that. And when new homes are trying to be built in these areas, they're not able to pass perk tests and everything else. So we've started, this was part of our long-range plan. We started talking about this. The particular use of the ARP funds was one of these where we saw an opportunity to approach the commissioners and ask if there was an opportunity to do that. It does two things. And again, I'm going to go back to that. I understand Sheriff Skinner doesn't want to pay a monthly bill. I appreciate that. I don't like paying a monthly bill either. But on the same hand, in providing a safe and sanitary county, which is what we're tasked with with Delaware County Regional Waste, is to make sure that we have safe counties, and we don't have septics that are overflowing and everything else. We have to start making those long-range plans that if we're going to deal with this. So we haven't started the polling. We've started talking. We did talk with Mount Summit and those areas where they are having some problems. We also were trying to find a way to regionalize and work together and utilize the infrastructure that is already there. And so that's what this project primarily does.
If this goes by Sheriff Skinner's property, is he forced to...
So state law requires that if anybody is within 300 feet of a sanitary sewer system, they have to hook up. Now, that is enforced by the sewer system. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. I'm just talking what the state law says.
Well, Jane, I can tell you, if they get a loan on their property, especially FHA or HUD loan, VA loan, they would be required to hook up unless the price wasn't feasible. So, I mean, in selling a property, we see that, you know, a lot on the transfer of a property, it comes up as a requirement to hook on the city sewer if they're not. And I think most people, when the opportunity arises, that's when they hook up, because that's when the most economical way to get hooked up to the sewer is usually going to be presented. But, and I don't know that it's necessarily our responsibility to question pieces of this project as much as the accountability and making sure that we're able to ensure, you know, our body, the Auditor's Office, Treasurer's Office, and Commissioner's Office, that we have done what we needed to do so that we've qualified for this. And I don't, you know, I think that may fall on, may and probably should fall on us to make sure that that's happening. But, I mean, I appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into this plan on all the different levels that it's happened. But we, as a body, we haven't seen this plan publicly until today. It's kind of where we're at with it. So we've ultimately got to make a decision by the end of, before we close out this meeting today, on where we're going with it. And again, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into it. I don't know that it's our call to question each individual project and whether or not we agree or don't agree with it. I think that's the commissioners. The commissioners have made a decision to come up with this plan on their own. I guess one of the questions I have is, has the plan in total been publicly presented? And I don't know the answer to that, I guess.
Before he goes, Jane, just to answer, the board's feeling was, no one will be forced onto the sewer system. Once their septic fails, there's an option there. The state won't issue another permit for a septic, and so it'll be pump and haul. Our costs should be tremendously lower than the annual pump and haul, or monthly or quarterly, depending on size of home.
Thank you.
Scott, yes, we had a public hearing last week on this.
But was there actually a public presentation of the plan so that the public knows not only what the plan is, but how to apply?
The plan was put out, I believe it was put out over our website, because we did have one gentleman showed up. He had the plan and discussed it. But, yeah, we had our public hearing on it. It's on the website. Each one of yous was emailed last week this, so...
Yeah, I've got a copy of it right here.
No, I think what Scott was saying is, we haven't, like, as a group, publicly talked about it. We've all had time to look over it.
Yeah, but the thing is, is to say you haven't seen the plan, is a little understatement there when we've melted out, because it's either you've seen it, or you haven't opened your email to look at it.
I think there were some, I got, I don't know, Jenny gave me one, but there's been one since then. And that was my question. Do I have the most current ones?
Yep.
We received it from John after Monday's commissioners' meeting, I believe. How many people attended the public hearing? Did you have? It looked, at least when I was watching it on Facebook, it looked like it came in a little late, so I wasn't sure.
No. Yeah, merch restaurant came in and talked. Mr. Hensler back here, he come in and talked.
Yeah, and Jane was there. I certainly don't want to hold up any projects. And to Scott's point, you know, the resolution said that the commissioners shall make the plan, and we're here to appropriate the funds. There is one blank on here, which is the revenue replacement for 2020, which math, if you take out that 8.3 million from the 11 that you're asking for, it leaves $2,648, excuse me, $2,648,000 left to appropriate for that. I know at one point in a discussion with you, we saw some numbers about the revenue replacement. But then I received an email, or maybe it was the commissioners' meeting, talking about working with the Auditor's Office. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page on how we're going to determine those revenue replacement opportunities.
I think John sent an email, because we were told that there was like $800,000 for the revenue replacement.
I feel that number sounds correct.
And we haven't got anything back yet that shows that that is money that we need to put back in and replace. Once again, there's still money there. So if we can get that, that shows that we have to do an $800,000 revenue replacement, we can come back to you guys and say, you know, we need $800,000 appropriated to go into this line item.
And then I only have one other comment or suggestion or ask, I suppose. You know, we are in the middle of budget hearings, and would there be, I know some other counties have done this, and I haven't, we haven't, I apologize, we haven't talked about this before. Are there any opportunities for any kind of employee stipend?
And that could be discussed. Like I said, there's still money there. We just have some infrastructure projects.
Sure.
That would be nice to go ahead and get them in design, get them going and everything.
So you're saying there's a chance?
Because there's a chance for anything. You can sit down and you can, we can discuss it. Only thing I ask is, don't send me an email requesting a certain amount of money, and...
I'd like to sit down and actually have a conversation, so.
Because that's not how I do business.
Sure. All right, well, thank you.
I'm going to pick on Yorktown a minute, since I live there. And I can honestly say, and Pete will verify this, I've laid sewer pipe in the ground in Yorktown personally, a lot of it. I've laid water lines in there. Why does the town of Yorktown need a million dollars out of this money?
So this is...
When we're pretty independent folks out there, we kind of stand on our own.
So this request is actually for out at Park One. This is not a request for inside the urbanized limits of Yorktown. This is to make Park One a better opportunity for industrial growth. And with the recent announcement of Muncie Power moving out there, and also having McAllisters, which is no longer able to dump into the sewer proper, we're looking at how we can provide sewer out to the northwest quadrant of Park One. And so that's what this sewer and water out to that area. So we're looking at that. We'd also be looking at how, if there's a need to go into, I believe it's Harrison Township to the north, there's been some requests for folks to possibly go on sewer and water in that area north of what would have been the all-steel carports. And so this allows us to get that under design. We would also match this with some of the dollars that we are receiving from the AARP directly, and we'll be looking at this. So that is what that project is for, is not for anything.
Why did it go up a half a million dollars?
What's that?
I have two versions. I have one that's a million and one that's a million and a half.
I can tell you that we requested a million.
There's one of them, and there's the other.
Yeah, so I do not know what you have in front of you. I can tell you that we requested a million and a half. You would need to verify with the commissioners on which plan they authorize. We obviously understand that if it needs to get taken down, and as Commissioner King has just stated, if it comes in under a million and a half, we would absolutely expect that money to come back and be utilized for an appropriate use.
Well, I didn't make this report. It came to me from the commissioners. One of them's got a total of $11,306,900, and this one's got $8,352,000. And then this one's got some...
$8 million went wrong.
Pardon?
That's the one we're presenting.
I know you are, but you took some items off and then added a half a million to the Yorktown project. Looks like you took the town of Eaton off.
Yeah, that was discussed in their commissioners' meeting last week, that they actually asked to be removed from the ARP plan.
We removed a couple of projects from that to bring it down to where it needs to be. Eaton actually was getting some grants and came back and said that they really didn't need the funding, and they were worried that that would do something to the grants.
How did you manage to get the Daleville Town Hall, get your permits if you didn't have money to hook up the sewer and the sawmower?
What that is, is we can either pay that out of the bot, which will raise the payment on that, or they can come back and pay that.
I do want to clear one thing up, I think, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. When, like Pete mentioned, that money would go, they only used a million two, $300,000 would go back. It doesn't go back into, like, the general fund or anywhere else. It goes right back into the ARP monies to be used for another ARP project.
Right.
Not for general use for whatever. So just like when we went through our transfers and addendums and whatnot, they stay within the fund that they were originally allocated to, just so everyone's aware.
It's just like every other project. You can go in and do a project. They might say it's 1.2 million, and the project could come under $900,000, a million. And you have that money saved, and then it turn around, and it, like you said, will go right back into the ARP plan.
Well, and I think from discussion and finance and talking to some of the other elected officials, what I would like to be able to do, and you guys helped me out whether we can do this or not, is I want to keep the AARP funds completely separate on a separate finance addendum whenever we do any kind of appropriations for those. Is that something that we can do?
On the finance request, you want them separate?
I want a completely separate AARP...
You advise against the news, huh?
Addendum, so that we know that, so that we and the public knows that whenever we're dealing with that money, that's in that fund and out of that fund only, and completely separate from general fund or transfers or any other budgets.
You're just asking for...
Separate on the agenda.
I think maybe he's asking for it as a tab, so it prints off on its own sheet of paper, so it...
So you want it on a piece of paper all by itself?
I would rather, yeah, I would rather see that completely separate from any of the other stuff that we're doing, because we, I don't know where we're at from, I mean, the accountability part of it is what concerns me just to make sure that, I mean, it's good to have, I think it's good to have lots of sets of eyes on these to make sure that they're, and I don't know how we do it when we get a lot of these different, I mean, yeah, the AARP guidelines say that, you know, these other entities are responsible and have to operate within those guidelines. But, I mean, when we come down right to it, who says they will? You know, I guess I want to know where those responsibilities are.
It'll be up to the commissioners to make sure that these guidelines are followed.
Right.
And also...
But ultimately, when, we've been told at AIC meetings, unless this is changed, I mean, the AARP funds will be the State Board of Account audits... the ARP funds will be the state board of account audits for the next four years. You know, normally they pick out one thing to audit in addition to all of our auditing that gets done. These will be those audits. And I just, you know, we've got to get the, ultimately, the auditor's office is, is responsible for these and, and will get dinged. I guess if they aren't either reported correctly or spent correctly. If they're not spent correctly, then obviously the risk is that we have to pay these funds back. And I don't want.
I don't want to pay those funds back, Scott. That's the reason why we didn't jump on this. We took our time to make sure everything was good. Yeah, I don't want to see the county have to pay anything back. You know, when I, just like everybody in here, when I ran for election, when I leave here, I want to leave a better place, not a place worse than what it was.
I guess I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
And I'm not going to stick anybody with anything when I leave here that they got to pay back.
I guess I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, that we know who's responsible for the reporting and those, and those will be done, you know, with enough time for the auditor's office to file reports. And I'm, I'm not sure how we do that.
James, I want to just make two comments. One is in support of, of this money because right now today, when we're doing our budget, we have CARES Act money that we have, that we have, that we're going to have to consider in our operating expense. So when I'm looking at the operating expense or the operating balance, I'm taking 2 million out of that because that's CARES money. And that, I would, I, I think we were the one decided to put it in general fund, but I, I would have preferred if it had been kept separate.
Right.
Because of that. My second comment is I have always been opposed to a non-elected person spending tax dollars. I can't see, and this is nothing new. This has been a concern of mine ever since. The Visitors Bureau giving out a million dollars. How do I say this?
I know. We've discussed this.
Yeah, yeah, without, you're right. Without any oversight, without any, you know, this is tax dollars that should be spent by, by those of us or somebody that has been elected to that position, not put in that position because of somebody.
Right.
Those are just my two concerns.
Yeah, they will be the ones that will be looking at the applications and all that. The say-so will actually come down because it will be turned over to the commissioners to either say yes or no if it goes, wherever it goes. So there will be some oversight there through the commissioners' office.
So they will just make their recommendations?
Recommendation to the commissioners that this is where the money should go and we will approve it. Yeah, because I'm like you, I want to make sure that the money is being spent where it's supposed to be. And, and also Jessica on your one comment, we also have to remember under this, it was like $13 an hour.
Right.
To a certain amount, so.
Sure, sure. But any little bit could be appreciated right now. So I understand.
I don't want people leaving here and thinking that it's going to be some huge amount.
Right.
Put a certain amount of numbers and everything in there.
Yeah, there's a formula.
Yeah, for that stuff. So.
I had to ask.
You know, well, it's, it's like even, like Jane said about the CARES Act. I had nothing to do with the CARES Act money when it come in. CARES Act money went to the general fund. It went to the council. I didn't have any say-so where it's spent or anything else, so.
I guess my, I'm sorry, I have like a bunch of questions today. Then the last thing, is there, is there an opportunity for, like, we keep picking on the Visitors Bureau, but any of the other organizations like Bill's Group to come in before us and kind of give us updates on where things stand? Or I don't know if those are happening at the commissioners meeting, but it would be nice to maybe have some of that here as well, just so we're all kind of in sync with what's going on.
That's, that's one thing that we're asking people, that when they do get the money, that they will come in, they will tell us like where the project's going, how much has been spent on the project. We want to make sure that we're updated. And now that since we have everything on video, people can actually watch it at home and see where the money's being spent.
Thank you.
Can I just add something? Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. So I have a project in that plan for our eviction, eviction mediation program and also our regular mediation program. We're down to $13,000 in our mediation program and for the past five years, we had a surplus of 65,000. If I'm receiving this money, I look at it as a grant. So I have to keep a separate file. I have to keep a separate ledger. I have to keep all this stuff to report back to the people that give me the money, which is the commissioners. So for myself as a sub-recipient, I have stuff that I have to keep track of. What cases go into it, what money's spent, what, you know, where we're at. So for me, it's like that's just normal operating procedure. And then that's something that I would have to have available to them as soon as they ask for it, just like any grant, I'd have to make that available. I really need this money. I'm down to $13,000 and they, I have 40 cases pending right now. We had to implement co-pays a month ago just to keep the program going. This, this program blew up when we lost court time with, with the COVID. Everybody's going into mediation because nobody can get court time. So I really would appreciate you considering approving something, at least mine. But I mean, as a recipient, we, we expect to have to keep track of things. We expect to have to file reports. We expect to have to track all of that separately.
Thank you.
Are there any legal fees attached to this?
Mr. Attorney.
Joe.
Sorry, Joe.
If it were up to me, it'll be free.
Let's just hire Joe.
I mean, I would guess it'll be legal fees, just like anything else that the county does. I mean, we bill an hourly rate and that's kind of how it works, but. I, yeah, usually I think.
How much legal assistance or, once the plan is done and moving, how much legal assistance will we be needing?
That's up to the commissioners, really. I mean, if everything is put in place and ready to go, then ideally, legal assistance at that point would be minimal. So if the auditor's office handles reporting and the commissioners handle basic administration, legal work is pretty well done at that point. So it just depends again on how much is needed from, once the plan is adopted or approved and the money appropriated, how much legal assistance does the commissioners really need moving forward and that'll be totally up to them. So, but like I said, if all goes as planned, it'll be minimal.
So I'm, what I, one of the things I heard from what you said is, is you are expecting the auditor's office to be responsible for the reporting?
I think that inherent in their.
Well, that's what I'm, well, I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to get clarified because I want to be, I want to be clear on.
We just got to get the report to be able to.
Yeah, I want to be clear on that before we, before we get done with this today, that we know who, who's doing what and who's responsible for what. Because what you're, what you're asking us to do is approve this whole amount, give it to you guys and, and you guys spend it within the guidelines. You take responsibility for that. But the reporting part of it is, is going to be the auditor's office?
Reporting from the county to treasury would presumably be the auditor's office. I think that's just inherent in what they do day to day anyways. But, and I don't know, I'm not sure how smooth the first report went. I mean, since it was all zeros, it, I don't think would be too much. But I mean, treasury, I believe, has a portal set up that allows recipients to enter this information in. And I think just like with Gateway, the auditor's office does Gateway uploads too. I would just anticipate it being fairly similar. I don't see why, well, I don't know if there would be a benefit to having the commissioners do that directly and basically bypass the auditor's office. I think.
Right. I just want to be clear on, on who's doing what before we get this plan, before we get this appropriation approved. Because I don't want to, want us to get to the point where, you know, it's reporting time and, and auditor's office doesn't have what they need to get it done. I just want to make sure that that happens and happens smoothly. The auditor's office, I mean, the reporting on this looks to me like it's going to be pretty time-consuming. Or at least sometime, is the auditor's office and their staff able to be compensated out of the?
It does, yeah, there is provisions that allow for administrative costs to be covered. So I think we could probably work that in. I don't know, when you say costs associated with reporting, I'm not sure what that number is. But I mean, it is built into the system to allow to cover administrative legal and whatnot, so.
That would have to be information that they would get to us on what, how much more they would need for administrative cost.
This is, this is just a personal observation that there hasn't been very much closeness between the commissioners and the auditor's office. And I think if this is going to run smoothly and it's going to be a good plan that we can all be proud of, I, I think, I think the council and the commissioners, the auditor, I, I, I'm not so sure. We, we don't need to set up weekly, monthly meetings to see where we all are. I'm not sure it'd be a bad idea to, to hire somebody through the auditor's office to, to do the reporting and make sure the reporting is done.
And I don't know if this approves to hire an employee.
I don't know about an employee.
I don't even know if.
You could hire a consultant or whatever, you know, just like we hire Baker Tilly to do that type of stuff. I mean, you can theoretically hire them, but like I said, I'm not sure how the first report went. And Steve and Donna may be able to speak to that a little bit. But if it was just incredibly time and work intensive, then yeah, maybe it makes sense. Because that report in theory should, will be the easiest one to upload. So they're only going to get more difficult moving forward. And if it's a task that the auditor's office believes warrants an outside consultant to come in and help with, then I mean, we have that kind of cushion built into this plan now to allow for that expense. Now, I don't know what the cost would be for something like that, but if it's millions of dollars, that's probably a little exorbitant. But I mean, we have to do just the basic cost benefit analysis at that point, so.
Well, and I think the, the forecast that they're saying about the 10% would, would also account for, I believe it would also account for future auditing and, and things like that. And those things are going to happen because of the ARP funds and the requirements from state board of accounts. So those things I would assume could be compensated in the, in the, in the plan to the auditor's, you know, to whoever, I guess the auditor deems. But I think there needs to be some communication and especially if we go ahead and approve this, there's going to have to be some, there's going to have to be some kind of an agreement, I guess, on, between you guys and the auditor's office if we more or less take ourselves out of the picture here.
Steve, can you check to see what you would need help-wise with the reporting?
I think that Ed can probably speak about that. He had some training on that yesterday or Friday or whatever.
You want to speak?
He's the one that set the training up for him Friday.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, we did attend training at the conference and I did actually webinar. We got another one scheduled this Friday. But from the conference, the big emphasis was tracking and then reporting. That seemed to be the big emphasis and finally the, the audits. They said to leave 10% just for the audits, so.
Just for the audit?
Just for the audit. That's what they said. Because this, this is going to go on for the next four years.
Yeah.
So they said reserve 10% for the audits. And as far as tracking it, it's going to be extremely important because it's got to be categorized and you have to do these on quarterly basis. How much time it takes, I have no idea.
That's an awful lot of money.
Anything else?
92 counties. Good God.
You got anything else?
Well, I think it's just important, I mean, since the auditor's going to be doing that, that they work well with the commissioners and getting those claims. And we did set up in the treasurer's office separate account just for this money, so we can easily track it to make sure it's dedicated strictly for the art projects. And I know I talked to Donna about setting up separate funds for those different projects also. So I think that preliminary conversations have taken place. But going forward, working with the commissioners and getting those claims to make sure they're separate reports. And part of the meeting I've got scheduled for Friday is actually a company that's developed a project just for tracking hard money. They developed the last year with the COVID money. Now they got the new project for tracking all this hard money.
Uh huh. That's the one. I couldn't think of who I had talked to now about that.
So that, that's the way it's scheduled is Friday. And they'll generate the reports we need to be compliant for the treasury.
Just for the, just for the treasury?
Well, to the federal's, you know, treasury. That's where it's supply those reports.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
For the auditor's office, what?
That's the, where the quarterly reports go that Steve has to file?
I mean, the other thing this does is it allows us to generate reports and post them on the, on the website so that the community can actually look at where all the money's gone.
That would be appreciated.
So every time that report's updated, a report can be posted on the website so they can see how much is spent, where it's being spent.
And I think that's one of the things that, that I'm a little concerned about too, is how, how do people find out about this? And, and, and what, what do they have to do to be able to apply for this money? And I, I think that amount of money, that I guess a million dollars of, of that that's been assigned to, that's the only amount of money out of the plan that can be applied for at this time from the ARP funds. Okay.
That'd have nothing to do with this reporting. I'm just saying that this software, assuming we could go with this and this, and this can be covered out of the art money, it would generate those reports or those slideshows and presentations so that the public could be informed of all the different projects that the commissioners are working on.
Well, and there, there have been lots of changes already and there will be lots of changes throughout the next four or so years, I'm sure.
And that's also another issue because it seems like that's an evolving project that they're deploying to the county to spend the money. The definition of how it can be spent, et cetera. So documentation is very important because the way it's defined now could change next week. So it depends on when the decision's made and how it's being spent. May be okay today, but may not be tomorrow. So you got to have that all documented. And that's, that was my question going into this. I talked to Steve and Donna about a couple of days about this because it's, it's going to continue to change over the next, probably throughout the longevity of this whole project.
And with the funding that we have left over, if they could get us the price of the software, and that would help. We can always come back and ask to have those funds appropriated to purchase that. And if they need more help or a consulting firm, if they had a price on that, they could come back and, we could come back and ask for an additional appropriation out of what's left to help the auditor and the treasurer on that.
And if, if this gets approved today, I just can't stress how important it is to make sure that all of this, and I know you know this, and I would love to have more sets of eyes than to put in all that responsibility on, on you guys. I think that's, that's important going forward. And Steve or Donna, do you guys have any questions or concerns at this point?
Hold on. Wait till after our training Friday and then we'll see. I mean, you guys don't have to wait, but we're, that way we, we know what we need to do.
And that's, Steve and them, they can get back with us, let us know what they need. We can, I can get with you, Scott. And I can let you know what the appropriation and everything would be and set up a meeting or come back in October's meeting. Or even when you, if you have your budget ready to be done in October, before your October meeting, we could come in there and then we could do the appropriation to assist them.
Okay.
My concern is if, if you're going to approve this today, when the requests come in, the whole 11 million was put under one account. Now that we have a spreadsheet, each one of these needs their own account. So for tracking purposes, that would make it a lot better for us instead of throwing it all into one account.
I agree with.
Well, they should have been separate appropriations, really. Instead of just saying, here's 8 million dollars.
Yeah, and, and at the time.
All that, it'd be better for us to track if actually.
We didn't know.
We didn't know at the time when Jen put this request in, so.
Started out 11 million.
I'm sensing some hesitation up here to, to approve the whole 11 million today.
I don't want the whole 11 million. I just want one.
Didn't cut down to eight, but see, it was 11, 11-3-06.
I know that, that Emily needs hers.
Where's hers?
Could, could you, could you do just absolutely what is, what is needed today? And then, and then in October, come back with the rest of it? I don't want to put any hardships on you guys, but.
Yeah, my thing is, is we have a certain amount of time to have the projects completed. And I would like to be able to start having design work, everything else done. Because even if we do one of the sewer water projects that's in there, there's artifacts in the ground, you know, that takes time. So I just, I would like, like what we have in there now, I'd like to have it approved so we can move forward with the projects that we have there. You know, they put a time limit on, you know, when the money's supposed to be spent, when the projects are supposed to be completed. And one of my biggest things, too, is, okay, if we sit and we wait, and we wait, and we wait, we keep doing it, and then we get started, and all of a sudden we have a project that runs into 2027, 2028, are we going to have to pay that money back? Because we continue to, I guess, everybody tells me all the time to kick it down the can, kick the can down the road. I just like to.
Procrastination.
You know, I'd just like the, the projects that we have now, I'd like to get them approved so we can move forward. Like I said, it's just those projects, we still have funding in there to where we can come back, like with the auditor, the treasurer, to, if they need upgrades, anything else. And any other project, we will come back and ask you guys for the appropriation. You know, I, I understand if, if you guys don't want to approve it. Or what, my whole thing is, is I'm ready to start these projects so I can get them done. I don't want to sit and wait. Or if we have projects we can get done, I don't, at the end of the day, want to give this money back.
Well, and everyone's going to be bidding for these kind of jobs right now.
Yeah, if we have money left over, we got to give it back. So we might as well do the projects that it states in there that we can do.
Let me ask you this, can we, could we set a, Bill, can we set a special meeting for after the adoption on the 12th? Get these broke down into line items? Give you guys a few days to, to work through who's going to be responsible or what? And maybe get some kind of a, an agreement together?
If that's what you guys want, I can't do anything until you guys appropriate it. So if you guys don't appropriate the funds today, I can't, my hands are tied. I, I can't move forward with any of the projects. You know, it's, everything's dead in the water at the commissioner's standpoint until you guys decide or pick and choose what project you want us to do. And, I mean, really, to me, that's what it sort of looks like, is now, you know, let's pick and choose which project we do.
Well, and I don't think that's intended at all. I mean, the focus is, is from my perspective, has been on just making sure that all the ducks are in a row before we go ahead and start spending the money.
That's, that's mine.
I was just choosing Emily because she looks so, she looks so sorrowful.
But that's what I'm wondering, if a couple of weeks, if a couple of weeks is going to make a big difference to get, get these things.
If you guys want.
And I think that's the fastest we could do it if we don't do it today.
Yeah, like I said, Scott, it's, I can't do anything until you guys appropriate. If you don't appropriate the funding today, I absolutely can't.
I understand.
Do a thing. It's, my hands are tied until you guys appropriate the funding. Because it's.
Well, James, I've, I've, I've tried to sit here and be quiet, that's hard for me to do.
I know, Ron.
Very difficult.
I know.
You and I have butted heads, and you and I have worked hard.
Close together?
Hard together, too, because when you were president of the county council. But I take a little bit of a, whatever you want to say, shot at the county council when you took the county council's appointment to the tourism away recently. And then, all of a sudden, the county, the tourism board's going to have a million dollars to be responsible for, and the county council won't have an appointment to that board. And I happened to be in your shoes, representing your district, when the tourism board was formed. And my name's on the ordinance. And so you took the council's connection to the tourism board, in a sense. And then you're giving the tourism board a million dollars to somewhat have jurisdiction over, although you say you have final approval. I, I'm just curious as to why you took that appointment away?
So.
Why, why? I mean, I don't understand. We did it out of respect to the council, not any individual. I remember one time.
Well, my whole thing is, Ron, what are you getting at, that we took the appointment and now we're.
Changed the ordinance.
Now we're giving them a million dollars. Honestly, I mean, let's not beat around the bush, just say what you really mean.
What I'm doing. Why did you take the county council's appointment to that board away?
Because the commissioners wanted that appointment. Not enough?
Well, and I don't know what that has to do with.
It has nothing to do with this, it was just a dig toward me, like normal, when I come up here to these meetings.
We have to stall, we can't, we can't.
We don't have a question to call yet.
James?
Yeah.
Do you think that we could set up a, like a steering committee? And I'm, I'm not saying a big steering committee, just with a commissioner, a councilman, the auditor, the treasurer, a, a steering committee to, to work through this and to know what everybody is, is doing?
Jamie and you, and I have no problem sitting down with people.
I know.
I, I, you know, like me or not, I am who I am.
You met me in my office one day in uniform.
Yeah, you, you know, I, I am who I am. And you asked one of the questions about council and commissioners, what the problem is. You just seen it. I'm just up here asking for something. And the way Mr. Quakembusch was wording things, it didn't really sound appropriate to me. You know, you took an appointment away, now you're giving them a million dollars. You know, I've never let anybody astray here. I've always done what I've said I'm going to do, and I don't promise anybody anything. Somebody asks me something, I'll see what I can do. I take a lot from people in this county, other elected officials, and everything else. Sometimes I feel like I take more than most of the commissioners. But I'm normally the one that's up here taking all the heat. But I've never stole anything, I'm not a thief. I work hard, and I try to build this county back to where it used to be, where we had funds. To where we can continue with the services that everybody likes to have today, but we don't have the funding for it. I'd say it, but, you know, a lot of people will disagree with me. When the property tax caps come in, that hurt everybody.
Amen.
Absolutely.
You know, people complain about it, but it did. The state turns around, they give us to where you can raise low it. You can do this to raise funding. Nobody wants to do it. But you have employees, and I, sorry, but I'm going to get on my high horse here. But you have employees that really don't make anything. I have employees that don't really make anything. You know, and, and everybody's trying to figure out, how do we give a person a raise? How do we do this? How do we do that? You, you know, it's growing your community, it's building your community. It's everybody working together. Not sitting here doing like what just happened. You know, I do the right thing. Anytime you guys ask me something, I'll tell you. It's going to be the truth. Even if it's bad on me, it's going to be the truth. Or if you don't like it, it's still going to be the truth. And I understand you guys are going through the budget hearings and, and all of that stuff right now, but you have a lot of employees, honestly, that should be making a lot more money. Our job is, is to figure out how to do that. How to raise taxes somehow, how to keep your services to where they need to be. You know, those people in the county, have city or whatever, have people went out and asked about, you know, do you raise the, the lit tax, the low it tax? We're having a problem, you know, with the city, with, you know, do they join us in the 911 center, or do they not? There's a PSAT tax, so do we raise the PSAT tax? Which, honestly, if you raise it, county saves a million dollars. Because the PSAT pays for your 911. As elected officials, we have to start looking at things like that. Or you're not going to have the services and the good people that work for you anymore. To tell you the truth. You know, I just come up here to present this, but it just bothered me what was said a few minutes ago toward me. You know, so, Ron, for, for your information, I'm not a thief. And I didn't take that, I didn't take that board to give them a million dollars so I could control that board.
I was saying that we made that appointment at the time we wrote the ordinance out of respect to the council.
You know, I've, I've.
Had nothing to do with you.
All right, so in that case, I'm going to move to table this to our October 12th meeting.
You got to set a special meeting.
Set a special meeting?
You can't do the budget hearing, you'll have to, I mean, ask Bill, but you can't do the budget hearing.
So that gives us.
Let's vote on it and see what works. I say let's just vote on it.
Make the motion.
Does that, does that tie up anything for the auditor, though? Because they were just stating that they need to be able to make each project its own.
Well, whoever's going to make the motion, I'm going to ask that you let me give you numbers.
Okay.
If you're going to do, if you're going to do the 8 million, 352 on the sheet, if you guys have it.
Yeah.
I'm going to give you the numbers that I want to give these projects so we can put them in the computer, a separate account, so we can track each account.
So if that's the case, if we're doing this, are we voting on this as a whole?
Yes.
I'll, I'll be honest, we were talking about people's reservations, and, and I think I said it a minute, a minute ago. For me, I, I, I agree with almost everything on it. For me, the personal hangup is the Oakville thing.
That's next year.
Well, no, there's 250,000 of it for this year. So that kicks off that project. So for me.
450,000.
That could be for design work.
It's got to be for design. Yeah, for, for some of the design, right. And I get, but if, but if there's no project, there would be no, no design for it. So that's, I guess that was my, I like the whole thing. That one thing is hanging me up at that big total price tag with, because I, and again, I'm not saying that I create a plan or anything, but I would have liked to, like some social, social programs, public social programs.
Well, let's go ahead and get numbers.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, I, I don't, I don't want to have to be held up over one thing out of 10 things because I like 90% of it.
That, that's why we ask for it to be appropriated separate. Because if there was one that you didn't want to support, you could say, we're not supporting 456.
Right, because I support.
So my suggestion is, can I give you the numbers to read this on the record?
Yes.
The first one's 310, the second one's 311.
Yes. Give us, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, do you all have this piece of paper?
I got it.
Yes.
No, no, I don't, I don't.
I got it.
Okay.
Go ahead and, yeah, because, I mean, Jane can look at my computer.
So it's for the very first one, which is the mental health and rehab, we're going to give that 310, and I'm just going to go right down the line. That's going to be 310. Court mediation will be 311. Lodging will be 312. Health department, 313. Fairgrounds, 314. Uh, Oakville will be 315. Rorton, 316. Town of Yorktown, 317. Town of Albany, 318. Town of Delville, 319. Delville Storm Sewer, 320. Justice Center, 321. Let's see, is that BMS, 322. By the way, we can put these dollar amounts in, each will have their own account, we can track it. Tomorrow, we write a check to Delville, I'm just picking something. By the way, we can track it, what day that was processed, what day it went out, instead of lumping them all together.
And we can make a, a motion to vote for each one. Let's do it.
Do them as a whole, or do.
Is that something that, is that something that, Donna? Is that something that you, you could, what you've given us, can we do that today? Or do we need to allow you guys time to, can that be approved today?
Yeah, yeah.
Because it was advertised at the whole amount.
Because the whole overall dollar amount was advertised. We're just putting it in the right accounts, which it was already in the advertising 300 series anyway.
Okay, well, that was my concern, is being able to break these down like you needed them for accounting and reporting.
Yeah.
All right, well, in that case, then I move to approve Fund 8950, line 310, mental health and rehabilitation for 1.5 million dollars.
Scott, if you have a minute, you said the only thing is, is that wastewater project is your hangup?
The Oakville one, yes, sir.
If I take that off, can you vote on it as a whole? Or does everybody want to go through every project?
I don't think I can. I can.
I'm just trying to make this as easy as I can for everybody. Because I, I mean, it's, we've been doing this for over two hours.
Well, honestly.
Know where my, my hangup is.
Honestly, we could, we could do like we normally do. You could read all of these in, and we can vote yea or nay on the whole, on the whole thing, whether we take Oakville out or not. I mean, do you, do you want to take Oakville out or not?
I, also, I can take, if it's going to create that big of a problem, I can take that out.
So reduce that by the total by 450,000?
Don't you already have a motion on the floor?
Started one.
Oh, she just started it, okay. So take 315 completely out?
Yes. Well, that's the.
Right now, yeah.
That's what they've offered.
315 or 314?
315.
315 would be the Oakville mount somewhat designed, 450,000.
Which makes the total 7,452,000.
Now, does anybody have a problem going forward with reading those all in like we would normally on a transfer?
No.
Okay, Donna, you want to go ahead and read those?
Okay.
We're going to amend the, or not amend, we're going to change the transfer that was requested appropriation for, find it here.
Well, in that case, then I move to approve the ARP funds 8950 as amended.
Let her read it in and then make your motion.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead and read that in, Donna.
We get 7,902,000.
I think you guys are right.
All I did was put a minus sign in front of that 450,000. I checked their formula.
I, yeah, because we just took the total, 8 million, 352, and minus 450.
Oh, because it's still the 11,000 on the, on the sheet, I apologize.
So you want me to read these all in, or?
Yeah, but hang on a minute. James, did you guys increase the, the Yorktown, maybe that's where we're off?
That's what their conversation they had like an hour ago with Ron.
It went, Ron said it went from a million to a million five.
It's supposed, that's where, that's where.
To a million five is.
To a million five is.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, just go ahead and read those in and then we'll get a motion to approve.
310, Mental Health and Rehabilitation, 1 million 500,000. 311, Court Mediation Programs, 250,000. 312, Lodging and Tourism, 1 million dollars. 313, Health Department, IT and Clinic, 500,000. 314, Fairgrounds, 250,000. 316, Rorton Relief Sewer Design, 150,000. 317, Town of Yorktown Sewer Northwest Quadrant, 750,000, 1 million 500,000. 318, Town of Albany Water Project, 750,000. 319, Town of Delville Water and Sewage Project, 352,000. 320, Delville Storm Water, 200,000. 321, Justice Center, 1 million. 322, EMS Equipment and PPE, 450,000. For a total request of 7 million 902,000.
Move to approve as amended.
Got a motion from Piper, a second from Ballard. Any discussion? And James, you will work to make sure that everybody's responsible as far as the accounting goes. And then you guys bear the responsibility of making sure the, the.
I just hope next year when we come back to you guys, it's not another two hours.
Well, I think we'll have the experience of a year of doing the reporting and whatnot under us and we'd make that a lot smoother.
Well, and I think this is, I mean, like I say, this is the first time we've seen this publicly. I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of discussion here today about specific projects and stuff and I don't know that any, anybody necessarily needed to go there. But there is a lot of, I mean, that's the thing. There's not much awareness of what's, what's in here, out. And I just hope you guys are able to start bringing, I think it will come to light. I mean, we have newspaper reporters right here in the room. So. Okay. Any more, any more questions? Okay. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Um, I'm voting no. And you know why. There's, there are, there's only two hotels in Delaware County.
But there's a lot of restaurants.
There's a lot of restaurants. I, I, I agree with you on that.
And it's another thing, if it's all not spent, then.
I know. But, you know, we're giving it to.
Yeah, Jane's vote.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Alexander.
Yes. You're approved.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
All right. In that case, find this.
Now you can make your speech.
Yeah, I know. I had to pull it up because it, it wasn't all on the, well, it wasn't the full statement. I had to go find the, yeah. Uh, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance 2020-015.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
I couldn't sit here.
Yes.
Roll call, please, Steve.
They have to make a motion to.
Did you read this thing?
Mr. Quakenbush.
What?
To approve financial and transfer agenda.
So what?
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. All right. We've got, uh, let's see, appointments down, we've got a Yorktown library appointment that we will need to replace.
Is this a balanced board member or is this, can this be anyone in Yorktown who has an interest with the library?
We may have to check into that.
Okay.
Do you know offhand if that's a balanced board?
I don't think.
I don't think we're ready to appoint at this point anyway. So we'll have to, they do have to be a resident of Yorktown.
They just did that. They just did.
If you're interested in being on the Yorktown Library Board.
They have to be a resident the last two years. She did put that, but I don't think she put anything in there about the balance.
Okay. Well, if you have any interests and you live in Yorktown and have for the past two years on being on the board for the Yorktown Library, please reach out to one of your council members so we can contact you.
Now, let me give you a little historical background on that.
I don't know if we have time for it, right?
Well, I'm not going to take too long. But, but when that library board was created, the folks in the town of Yorktown wanted to have a library, a local library. So the local drugist, I think, gave them the building.
Yep.
And that took off and they needed our approval to set up a tax rate. Promises were made that we would not do anything to raise taxes, float bonds or that kind of stuff. Go out there and look now. They've got a bond issue. They build onto the building. Same deal with Daleville. And I know you guys think I'm taking a shot at people, but I've been here through all of this. When Daleville wanted to incorporate, they wanted to incorporate so they could get sanitary sewers through the regional wastewater. And I helped Daleville incorporate. And the people at the time were very sincere, came to us, talked to the commissioners. And I can verify this because there's a man right there that I gave their name to, to help them incorporate. That's Mr. Hughes. But then look what's happening. So you can't, it, it's kind of like when I was selling real estate one time and I told a lady, I was out there and saw a house with a big farm, 100 acre farm on the other side of the backyard. And I'll never forget it. I said, well, ma'am, if you buy this house, you won't have to worry about having a bunch of neighbors because it's all farm ground. And she looked at me and she says, young man, don't ever make promises to people like that because you can't make that promise. It won't. You know what's there now? PK town, New York town, probably 150,000. I don't forget things like that. I learned my lessons. When I make my comments to people, I try to pass on those lessons I've learned. Sometimes I don't get the words out right. I was not accusing James King of being dishonest in any way, shape or form. When we created that plan commission, we put appointment from the county council because we respected the people sitting in the chairs at the time. I'm sitting in one of those chairs now and I thought that was disrespectful for them to take that appointment away from the county council.
I think you meant.
I had, it had nothing to do with that million dollars.
You said tourism, not the library board.
What did I say?
We were talking about library board.
Well, I got off on tourism. I get nervous.
Okay. Uh, any department heads or elected officials got anything? Public comment? Anybody out on the list?
No. Where am I supposed to sign?
Try and keep it to three minutes, please.
Rick Yenser, author and former newsman. I'm appalled at the fact that you did not allow a public hearing on this federal stimulus plan. I think the law provides for any appropriations to have public appear. And there was none. The problem with this plan, as I've said before, it doesn't address the people. It addresses infrastructure, utilities, roads. And you're even putting a roof on a privately owned jail that the majority of this council approved a couple of years ago. I don't know about you, but I don't fix up property for other people. The other problem here is that you're not taking care of the employees. You could easily give bonuses. And frankly, I'm glad you did drop the Oakville. I'm not sure why Delaware is providing sewer service to another county, especially after you raised our sewer rates in Westbrook, Camac and Daleville 40% last year during a pandemic. I've seen nothing but tax increases and I heard hints today of an income tax increase between city and county to create another revenue stream. I mean, you've got millions now and it should be used to help people that lost their homes, that are still unemployed and need help. So I would ask government to be a little bit more diligent in trying to help the people. Just like one councilman said, you've already been told. This can be used for an array of things, not just infrastructure, paying down the government. Two things come to mind from other states. A local stimulus check that the federal government provided and taxpayer relief. Our property taxes have gone up over the last five years. So just think about it.
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name is Corporal Massey and I'm currently a correctional officer in the jail. I've been employed with the county since 2015. I'm a training officer, pepper ball certified, TASER certified, IDAC certified, trained for the commissary department and a test out officer in the jail. I have my bachelor's degree as well. First off, I want to make sure, first off, I want to make sure that I make it very clear that no parts of this are to disrespect with absolutely no intention to demean or belittle any other profession or career. I use this specific job as an example simply for comparison purposes only. A highway laborer worker makes 1918 an hour. Skills and knowledge requirements, high school diploma, duties, removes weeds, brush, assist with flagging, traffic control, assist on cleaning and maintaining vehicles. I'm very much aware that this job is much more than my brief summary of the job description. However, I wanted to be heavily noted the amount of requirements that we hold and the lack of pay that we require, lack of pay to require these things. As an officer of the jail, you hire in a 1610. This is your pay unless you obtain rank. Job requirements include a successful completion of the Indiana law enforcement training board. Failure to pass this requirement will result in termination as a correctional officer. You must have the ability to deal swiftly, rationally, decisively with potentially violent individuals. Monthly shift meetings, 40 hours of training a year, defensive tactic training. Failure to complete these trainings on an annual basis may result in termination as a correctional officer. These are just a few of our requirements. We conduct pat downs and strip searches of every subject brought into the facility along with their clothing and personal property. This process alone puts officers in a position to be susceptible to parasites, diseases such as hepatitis, HIV, TB, MRSA, chicken pox, lice, bedbugs, COVID, et cetera. This is not only a fear for officers, but for our families as well. Officers often have to secure and or restrain violent and uncontrollable inmates as situations demand. Officers cannot refuse to respond. It is our job to respond. It is our job to protect inmates from themselves and others while in custody. We are obligated to intervene in acts of self harm and attempted suicides. We don't have the option of not responding. Low pay, high stress, expedited training, understaffing, excessive overtime and a high turnover rate for officers have put the lives of officers as well as inmates at risk. This jail, the jail has much more dangerous inmate populations to CO ratio and lower experienced staff. No matter how hard we try to avoid, at some point, it will lead to a complete disaster. We currently hold a minimal staffing of 11 people on day shift. Six of our officers on day shift are still not fully tested out of their packet. The situation is then intensified by the fact that officers interested in supplementing their pay, like myself, often work large amount of overtime. So correctional officers are dissatisfied with their jobs because of their low pay, stressed due to their lack of job experience, overwhelmed by the amount of work by less officers and exhausted because of the financial need to work overtime. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any cool stories like Ron, but I did prepare something. So Mitch Corey, 3100 South Tilson. My name is Corporal Mitch Corey. I'm a detective with the sheriff's office. I've been a deputy for eight years and prior to that, I was a reserve. My duties and responsibilities include working assigned cases, which includes everything from murder to child molestation cases. In addition to this, I'm the department's crime scene tech and property room manager. I have attended countless trainings and hold numerous certifications. Also have a bachelor's degree from Ball State University. I'm one of two craft rig constructionists on our department and a scuba diver as well. I also assisted in the completion of the pay study that you have received. Across the board raises seem to come up every year at budget time. Although we have some very skilled and hardworking county employees, deputies and correctional officers have infinitely more responsibilities than any other job in county government. I don't think I need to mention the differences between a secretary and deputy correctional officer. However, maybe most don't know that county employees work 32 and a half hours a week. With the average salary for a county employee being 32,500 per year, county employees make 1923 per hour of actual work time. A deputy with 14 years of experience is making $20.45 per hour right now. And this is $3 more than, per hour than correctional staff make. Don't forget that our deputies and correctional officers generally work 40 hours a week and are not guaranteed a lunch hour either. As law enforcement, we are the ones who are running towards the gunfire. We are the ones making the scenes safe for other first responders to enter and provide help. We play a vital role in keeping our community safe. Speaking of gunfire, recently, our deputies were dispatched to a call of a subject with a gun and the caller said that one shot had already been fired. Upon our deputy's arrival, he heard six gunshots as he was approaching the residence. This did not deter our deputy and he made a tactical approach to the residence and attempted to locate the shooter. This incident sparked a multi-day manhunt for a suspect who was eventually taken into custody. This offender posed serious risk to the community as he fled multiple times and was involved with weapons. This is just one example of how our deputies, our department serves the citizens of Delaware County in even the most dangerous of circumstances. During my time as a detective, our division also assisted at least one council member with a burglary of their residence and two relative residences, which ended in the arrest and conviction of those involved. Unfortunately, due to staffing shortages, we have had to put a detective back on the road. This has made it more challenging to work these types of cases efficiently and get the results that we did for this council member and their family. This pay study was brought to your attention early in the year to give you time to come up with a plan. The sheriff had part of the plan figured out and offered up a large amount of concessions to make it easier on you to rectify the pay situation. I find it troublesome that in one of the budget meetings, a council member stated, other than laying off employees, does anyone else have any other ideas? And this was met with silence. This should have been addressed long before budget time. If you had any intention of correcting this pay disparity, you have worked with the sheriff to come up with a plan. Unfortunately, without your courage to do the right thing, we will continue to lose experienced deputies and correctional officers to other agencies. Who can blame them? We can go next door to Madison County or across the street to MPD and make around 12,000 more, starting with better educational pay, special teams pay, clothing allowance and other benefits, including insurance. I want each of you to know that our deputies and correctional officers feel abandoned by the council commissioners and don't feel supported. A thousand dollar raise across the board is a slap in the face to us after the factual information we have provided that shows how truly underpaid we are. I don't believe this will fix the issue, the issues we face, but it is a start and will help us retain the good deputies that we do have. I don't think anyone understands the gravity of the situation. I hear that multiple deputies are looking at jobs even outside of law enforcement because of how underpaid we are and the lack of support from most of you. Publicly, I want to thank Mr. Webb for his support during these times. He's the only council member that has tried to come up with a plan to help the situation at all. Unfortunately, I am sure that you have made up your mind, but if this problem is not addressed, it will not be going away and will only continue to get worse. I encourage all of you to do the right thing for your constituents and your deputies and correctional officers. Don't defund the sheriff's department. We deserve fair pay because Delaware County residents' safety is worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, I'm going to let these guys talk if they want to talk.
Appreciate that.
Captain Tony Johnson, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. The county employs approximately 440 full-time employees to run the business of the county government. It's not easy to discuss pay raises and disparity because all county employees work hard and all feel that their hard work should be rewarded. And I agree with them. But I am charged with the men and women of the sheriff's office, and so I advocate for them accordingly. I've sat through these hearings and I've listened to elected officials and department heads as they have presented pay proposals to increase pay for those that work for them. Some have provided you with data on the money that they generate to the county general. Some have shown that their department can fund and sustain their employee increases. And I heard one department head advocate for pay increases at different rates within that department because they realize that some work is more difficult and should be valued at a higher wage. And I agree with this philosophy. In your 2022 budget proposal for convention and tourism, you agreed to accept that proposal, which called for a pay increase for that executive director of 28,661. This was recommended by an outside entity for a director yet to be named. In the tourism budget, along with the. In the tourism budget, along with the executive director, there is a visitor experience director, an office manager, and two visitor experience representatives. So, one director will be overseeing four people and will be compensated up to $85,000. I'd like you to compare this to your current jail commander, who will oversee more than 300 inmates and more than 70 correctional officers. He will hire, discipline, and fire correctional officers as necessary. He will be named in every frivolous lawsuit, no matter how small. He will be on call 24/7 for any emergencies that arise in that jail. And while other comparable jail commanders in the state of Indiana will be compensated over $85,000 a year on average, you will get your jail commander for the bargain price of $50,000 next year. Your chief deputy will oversee all county operations. He will oversee the jail as well as patrol, investigations, and special teams, and he's currently our bomb squad commander. He will be on call 24/7, and he does not accept any overtime. While other chief deputies of similar-sized counties are being compensated in an average of $90,000 per year, your chief deputy will earn $53,000 for the work that he performs. Now, I understand the reasoning for across-the-board pay raises. It's easy, and it involves little effort. It allows you the ease of a hands-off approach so that you don't have to say that you value one position over another. You do it so you don't have to run the risk of offending anyone. But that's not the way you should be running the business of the Delaware County government. The fact is, some jobs are tougher than others, some jobs require more training than others, and some jobs are valued differently. This council needs to do the right thing. Deputies and correctional staff need to be brought up to the pay levels that they deserve. And when you do this, if someone disagrees and feels that they deserve more, just let them know that the jail is accepting applications. And you can inform them that the sheriff's office needs deputies, and they can apply during our next hiring process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Tony, I have also voices, concerns about the Visitors Bureau. I mean, this council will tell you that I've questioned it all along. And for the very reason you use.
Was that the last of the...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for public comment. Any of the council people?
Yeah, I do want to take an opportunity just to kind of give everyone an update on where we are with the budget hearing process. So, I guess I'll reiterate this because I know our budget hearings aren't all recorded, but one of the things is there is a lot of new faces who are attending our budget hearing process, which is great. When we throw out ideas during the budget process, they're simply that we're just trying to get ideas and understanding of how they impact the budgets that are part of the max levy. So, budgets such as the Visitors Bureau does not impact our max levy. They are an independent budget that has their own funds that comes in from the tourism tax dollars, those revenues. But so when the idea was thrown out to look at, you know, what a $1,000 raise across the board looks like, that's more just to give us an idea of how that raise impacts FICA, PERF, and any of the other benefits that go along with employees. And Scott had mentioned on Friday that, you know, whatever that number was, we could divide it by two, and that's what a $500 raise is. We could multiply it by two and get what a $2,000 raise is. It's just a way for us to get an idea of what that looks like. And, you know, before we get ahead of ourselves, like, we're trying to get information, but we still have, as of Friday, like 1.6 million to cut. Now, I know the conversation was suggested that we possibly reduce our operating balance by a million, which still leaves $600,000 and change to cut. Before we could get to the plan that we had Mr. Webb post on social media, which was just addressing how to find salary increases within the sheriff and jail budget. But we still have a lot of cutting to do before we can make additional cuts to get to any salary increase for any employee, and that's kind of where we stand right now. And there's not a single council member who doesn't want to find the money to give salary increases to everyone. And we understand that there needs to be an increase for law enforcement. There's not a single person up here who doesn't support that. But for those of you who are unaware, our budget dropped $1.4 million from last year. So, not only did we come into this budget season with a low budget, we came in 1.4 less, and we have line items and budgets that are state-mandated. We can't do anything about it. The state says these departments get these wages, and we have to do it. I know we talk about it every year during budget hearing, and that even happens with the restricted funds in the highway department. And, you know, there are a lot of challenges, and it's really easy to, you know, for us to say, yes, we want to support all these salary increases, but then trying to find the money and to, you know, Councilman Ballard's point about, you know, eliminating positions to create those funds. We don't want to do that either, but we're in a bit of a conundrum here, and we're working. Whether you, you know, believe it or not, we have a lot of conversations, and we're trying to get there, but still 1.6 before we can even think of any salary increases for any employees right now. It's hard. It's hard, and I wanted to share kind of where we are and what that process is because I know that there are a lot of opinions and emotions tied to this particular budget, and I just want to keep everyone up to date where we are.
Ms. Piper, do pay stipends go against your tax levy? I can do that. Do pay stipends go against your tax levy?
Well, see, that's why I asked Commissioner King about that today, was that I don't... That won't because that'll come out of the ARP funds. That's not a county general budget.
Okay, so what about stipends that are given through the... Are there any stipends that are given through the budget?
Not the budget. We were asking if there are ARP funds available, so then that way we could do something. And that would only be for a couple of years.
Right.
And my personal hope, and I don't think I've shared this with anyone, a couple people have talked about it. You know, we were told last year during budget hearings that our 2022 and 2023 budgets were going to be the hardest. I'm praying and hoping that come 2024, our revenues are more in line with where they were pre-COVID, because those revenue streams come in 18, 24 months behind. So, we're like in a COVID year now financially. So, I'm hoping by 2024, we're back to someplace good. So, my hope with talking to Commissioner King today is to find some way to get money out of ARP to supplement that until we can get our budget, our levy, to a healthier place.
All right. So, pay stipends, then, in the county, do they go against your tax levy, is what I'm asking?
No, because that's a different fund. So, in the levy, it's... Let me pull that out for you. So, what falls under the levy is county general, which are where most of the salaries come from, Board of Health, cumulative bridge, and reassessment funds.
Okay.
So, those are the only four funds that impact the max levy. Anything outside of that, all of the grants that we talk about, a lot of the grants we move money around today, aren't part of county general. They're their own funds. The Visitors Bureau is its own fund. It has no impact on max levy. ARP money has no play, doesn't do anything to the max levy, which are just those four funds.
All right.
So, right now, according with the seven-cent cumulative bridge rate, our maximum levy for this for 2022 is $28,222,654.
Okay. Well, I found something interesting, if I could, just real quick, if you don't mind. Go ahead. It's been a long day. Yes or no?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. I'm sorry, and I'm new to the budget process, so give me a second here. But as I'm going through the books and I look, I see that your auditor's an eligible standard deduction fund. There's settlement advisor deputy, there's budget advisor department head or bookkeeper, and a special taxing and abatement deputies. Those are pay lines within that fund. Are those considered stipends? Or are those considered pay?
They're fee-based.
It's to the base? So, that's against the levy, then?
No.
No?
It's fee-based.
Okay, all right.
From the fees that people pay because they got caught.
Okay, so if you have a perpetual fund, you can put a stipend or something in there, and then you can give that back, so to speak, to employees that maybe help earn that money?
If the council approves it.
If the council approves it, that's done by ordinance?
No.
No? Okay. All right, well, look, I won't take any more time. I'm just curious about that.
I appreciate you inquiring and asking these questions because they're questions that a lot of people have, and it is tricky because you think that all of these other funds impact our decision for the county general budget. And unfortunately, if those other funds are available and we can move them all over, things might be a lot easier, but by law, they're stuck where they are, and they have to be used for those purposes, and that's it.
Okay.
And keep in mind, I mean, we've kept people being paid out of some of those funds so we can free up money in county general. And at some point in time, those people are going to have to go back as those funds get depleted that are outside of... Get depleted that are outside of county general. So, what we're trying to do is make some room in this budget to be able to, again, you know... You know, I think when you guys walk out of a meeting, it seems like that's the final decision, and we're far from it. I mean, we've still got a... Matter of fact, I think we've gone backwards the last couple of meetings, and we've got to get this going in the other direction. So, none of... And I'll repeat this again, I don't know if you were at the last meeting or not, but none of what we have done is final at this point. It won't be final until the budget's approved on October the 12th.
Just to add to what you were saying, Captain Johnson, as well as on those pay raises and increases for really everybody, not just your department, correctional officers, but I've said it before, I'll say it again, in my opinion, there's... When I look through the ARP funds eligibility, it's littered with things within our county general budget that money could be applied there. Unfortunately, we don't control the money. It would require cooperation from the commissioners. So, if they were willing to cooperate and free up some of that money, that might give us a little bit more wiggle room to play with.
Which was my ask today, so hopefully we get that opportunity because that would... That would be a start.
Well, you know, when this session started, I wanted to work backwards from what we normally do. Let's go through the budget. Let's know exactly what we're going to have to spend. We had $600,000 in our budget. So, whatever we have, if we have anything left over, I mean, we're all going... We're going to spend it all on raises. So, I think it's been a little unfair that we've been accused of not wanting to do raises. That's not the case at all. If that had been the case, Scott would never have put the $600,000 in the council budget.
Well, and the narrative of defunding is completely unfair as well.
Yeah, it is. You're right.
Completely unfair. That narrative that continues to get put out there, I've got letters about that. Every year, the sheriff's budget goes up. How are we defunding anybody? That is a garbage narrative to me, and it's irritating because nobody's taking anything. My two cents.
There you go. There's the letters.
All right, anybody else?
Well, you know, we've got a million dollars out of... And if we're a million and six over, I mean, this is a scary thought. You could get that million and six by giving up that $600,000 raise in the county council, and I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that.
Well, I think you made a comment privately, I mean, in the last budget session. I mean, you know, honestly, if we take where we were with, you know, reducing the... What I want to say on Ron's discussion, the operating balance, and take the $600,000, theoretically, we could close out the budget, but we're not doing that. We're obviously still working on it, so... Anybody else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Got one from Ballard in second.
There were no emails that came in, so...
Okay, second from Piper. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
We want to be fair with you, but we want you guys to be fair with us, too.
Ballard, what's your vote?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaycon.
There's a voice over here, aren't we, Mary? Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.